Good afternoon. I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Board of Trustees for Tuesday, August 13th. If we could have it quiet, thank you. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes ma'am, thank you Madam President. Trustee Calvert. Trustee Caudill. President Simon Hollen.
Here.
Trustee Kelly. Trustee Minneto. Vice President Raymond.
Here.
Clerk Taylor, I am here. And we have a new student representative, Student Representative Victoria Gomez.
From Worcester High School.
Worcester High School, the Colts. Welcome, thank you for being here.
Or as your principal says, Worcester!
Right.
Okay.
Alright, well, thank you very much, Madam President. We have a call.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And our new student representative, Ms. Gomez, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Our next item is public comment, and I wanted to let folks know, we have some wonderful students that are going to be telling us about their first day of school. And with your consideration, I'd like to hear from them first, before we go to public comments, so that we can get them out of here when they need to. And I'd also like to let folks know that if you are here for item 2.18, we are going to take that, that's the possible action to approve reappointments to the share committee. We'll take that out of consent, and we will hear that separately. So if you're on that item, we would prefer that you speak on that item and not in the general public comment. Okay, one for...
General.
Okay, okay. Well then, if we only have one, let's go ahead and do our general public comment. Jason Maddock. Jason, welcome. Been following you on Twitter.
Hey, how are ya?
Nice to see you, sir.
I'm Dr. McNeil, trustees. My name is Jason Maddock. I'm a proud father of two students in Washoe County, but more importantly, I am a proud employee and administrator of Washoe County School District. I'm an assistant principal at Billinghurst Middle School, and we have kicked off this year better than any of the 17 years that I've been employed by this district. I'm here to start the board meeting today with a little positivity. July was a tough month for all of us, and as Dr. McNeil said in last Friday's LTL, it was a struggle. The struggle was real, and it was a very transparent month for all of us in the leadership roles in our schools and our communities. But I want to take this moment to recognize the leadership of Dr. Kristen McNeil and the entire leadership team, air superintendents, Mr. Bowsdorff, everybody that took on the month of August and the start of our school year, and brought that energy and excitement back to Washoe County. And the message was clear, it's time for all of us to be proud to be in this district again. And it resonated throughout our building at Billinghurst. It was definitely in my kids' building when I was there, dropping them off on the first day of school. And I talked to a lot of my colleagues after these first couple of days, and the energy and excitement that our district is headed in is the right direction. So thank you to the leadership team, and good luck today in the meetings.
Thank you, Jason. Was that for general public comment, your new one? Okay, okay, great. Then that will close our general public comment, and I'll move on to action to adopt the agenda. Okay, motion by trustee Kelly and second by clerk Taylor. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, and then on to the consent agenda. And again, I am requesting that we take item 2.18 out of the consent agenda, and we'll have a discussion, because I imagine we have a considerable number of folks who want to speak on that item specifically. Is there anyone who would wish to take any other item out of the consent agenda for separate consideration? Okay. Is there any public comment on items other than 2.18 from the consent agenda? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, 2.02 through 2.17, and then 2.19?
So moved.
Thank you, Vice President Raymond. Second by trustee Caudill. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. And then again, with your consideration, I'd like to invite our students to speak, if we can do that, and then we'll come back to 2.18. Okay? So our, we're going to move to 3.01, which is presentation from students attending various schools throughout the Washoe County School District on their experiences from their first day of school. And Dr. McNeil and Dr. Parks, who's going to tee up?
So we are very, very excited. Dr. Parks will introduce each one of our students. This is a tradition that we are very happy to bring back to the Board of Trustees. We welcome our students, and they're going to talk to us for about three minutes each on their very first day of school. We have nine students from all over our district who are going to be able to tell us about their fantastic first day. And then we have a little gift for each one of our students after their talking. So, Dr. Parks.
Alright. What a great honor it is to get to present this item. Good afternoon, President Simon Hollen, interim superintendent McNeil. As you started yesterday, for many of us educators, was the best day of the year, because all of our students came back and all their families sent them back. We'd been working hard all summer long, and finally, they're here. So as a part of our initiative of student voice, we are here to hear how their first days went. As Dr. McNeil said, we also have a little treat. So without further ado, here is Mrs. Dominguez and Noah Lopez-Ruelas. Did I pronounce that right, buddy?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, let's hear from Noah.
So on my first day of school, I played on the playground, and it was really fun.
What did you play with?
I played with my friends and my sister.
And what did we get? Remember as a school? Do you remember at the assembly?
And...
What did all the teachers get to give you guys?
Balls.
We got a whole new set of playground balls from the money for our run for education. And what grade, what's the color of all the equipment for your grade?
Blue.
Great.
What else did you do? You kicked off the day yesterday. You started the whole school year doing what?
Playing.
Yeah, you did, you're right. Do you remember with me? You and I did what? What did we lead?
The Pledge of Allegiance.
Great. So we start our day together out on the playground at our morning gathering. And so Noah was our first Pledge of Allegiance leader yesterday.
Wow, good job, Noah.
So you, when you went into Ms. Gro's class, can you tell them about what you guys did in science yesterday afternoon?
We tried to make grass.
Grass.
Oh my.
Did you grow grass in one day?
No.
What'd you do? What should you work with? The dirt and the seeds.
The dirt and the seeds.
Mm-hmm, yeah. What was the best thing about your first day at Whitehead?
The best thing, the first day of Whitehead is meeting a new teacher.
Who's your teacher?
Ms. Gro.
Ms. Gro, and who else? Burke.
Ms. Burke.
Great.
So he's got two. Alright.
Alright, good job, Noah. Thank you so much. And have a great year in first grade.
So thank you.
Thank you.
Nice job, Noah. Cutie pie. Thank you.
Alright, yes, thank you, Noah. And next, from Warner Elementary School, we have Andrew Villa, and Mrs. Schulroy is his principal.
Welcome, Andrew. Welcome, Ms. Schulroy. Well, what would you like to tell us about your first day of third grade at Warner?
So, um, my first day of third grade, it, I was excited and ready, and also today, I liked math today, it was cool. Yesterday, though, it was really, really fun. It, I, even on Sunday, I was like, I want to go to school already.
That's great.
Because I like it and stuff like that.
Was it fun to see your friends again after the summer?
Yeah. I missed Ethan mostly.
That's great.
What are your goals for third grade? Start with my goals.
My goals are going to have to be like A pluses and As mostly.
And you've been working on your, tell me what you've been working on at home, your mathematics.
Oh yeah, and at home, I've been actually going onto my second grade book and doing some math, other math, when we've been staying at home. It was pretty good. And I was also on a children's dictionary.
Great.
And stuff, so...
Wow.
Yep.
And who's your new teacher?
Uh, my new teacher is actually Ms. Tyree.
Good.
And she's actually, she was my kindergarten teacher too.
Wow.
And, yeah.
Good.
It was great.
Alright. Thank you, Andrew. Good job. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah. The kids are getting a gift card to Yogurt Beach, so he liked that. Yeah.
Alright, and next, we have from Sarah Winamaka, fifth grader Vivian Handchett with Dr. Susan Frank as her principal.
Welcome, Vivian and Dr. Frank. I love your hairdo. I love your headband.
Thank you for having me.
Oh, thanks, Vivian. So how'd your first day go?
Good. It was really good.
What made it good?
What made my first day good is that I had fun with my teacher. So on my first day of school, um, we, uh, so on the first day of school, we went to, uh, we went, uh, when we got to school, we put our backpacks and our lunchboxes away. And when we put our backpacks and lunchboxes away, we went and did our, the teacher asked us to do our name tag, so, uh, that, my teacher's name is Davis. So when I was writing, so I wrote in my name tag, and I did some details to make it look pretty. And after when we did that, we did a quiz about our teacher. And after when we did a quiz about our teacher, we went and we, uh, and we asked a few questions about her. And after when we asked a few questions about her, we went, uh, and we, uh, we went, we did some writing, and after the writing, we went outside. And after outside, we had a little trouble, but we found the lunchroom.
That is important.
And then after the lunchroom, uh, we, we went back outside, and I caught a grass up her and then let it go. And then after when I did that, I went into line and we went inside. And we went inside, we talked a little bit more, and then we went to the assembly. At the assembly, we were, Ms. Dr. Frank read us a story, and after the story, we went, we, uh, went and, uh, and we went and we, and we went back and we talked a little bit more. And then after when we talked, uh, we have, we had, we, 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 he started packing up. And then when we packed up, we did a, a little bit of, we did, before we packed up, we got this bag, so to, today, we could, uh, we could share a few traits about it, and we'd like put the stuff that it said on the piece of paper. And then when we put it in, we go back tomorrow, I meant today, and then, uh, after when we did that, we packed up more. And then after when we packed up more and put our mailboxes, and we discussed what my number is, and everybody else's number in my class was, and that was number 20. And after that, we went home. And I almost forgot to say, I made, I made two more friends.
Oh, yay! Wow.
Thank you.
That was such a good job, Vivian. You have a great memory. I'd love to take you around with me all the time, so I could remember all the great things that I see.
She's your girl.
That's wonderful. Thank you, Vivian. Good job. Thank you, Dr. Frank. Oh my goodness.
Alright, and next, from Desert Skies, we have a sixth grader Rebecca Soto and principal Laura Peterson.
From our brand-new school, Desert Skies Middle School, just opening yesterday. Welcome, Rebecca and Mrs. Peterson. Great to have you here. So we just love having you here, and we want to hear about what you did your first day, and how did it go? You can just tell us anything that happened yesterday.
So, when I first went to homeroom, it was kind of hard to find the classrooms. And then, once I read the schedule and I read the numbers on the wall, I went, and it was easy, um, yesterday and today.
Great, great. And how do you like that new school?
It's very fun.
What do you like most about your new school?
Um, what I like most is maybe advisory.
Oh, good, good. Can you tell everybody what happens in advisory, so everybody else knows?
In advisory, we mostly go over schedules, and then we sometimes do a fun activity. And like yesterday, we got like this cup stacking game, and it was very fun.
Oh, excellent, excellent, okay. You want to add anything? Anything else you want to tell us? Did you meet some new friends?
Yeah.
Great.
What did you decide about lunch?
Um, yesterday, I thought the line was too long, so I didn't eat. But today, I got through it, and it was, the food was very good.
Oh, very good. Did you open your locker? Did you use your locker?
Well, the locker was kind of hard for me to open, but I think that was okay, since I didn't need to like have anything in it yet.
And did you get your new laptop?
Yeah.
Is that exciting?
Yeah.
Yeah, cool. Okay. Well, Mrs. Peterson, thank you and your staff for a great first day yesterday at your brand-new school. I know you've been working for weeks and weeks and weeks and weeks, actually all the last year for you.
All worth it, yeah. It's been a wonderful open, and the school is amazing. But yesterday, it even elevated to a more amazing level when the kids got there.
Great. Okay, well Rebecca, thank you so much for coming and talking to us. Okay.
Alright, and next, we have from Pine Middle School, Madison Trayhall, a seventh grader, and principal Brad Boudreau.
Welcome, Madison. Got your pine wear on, that's great. Alright, pine pride. So how did your first day go?
I have a whole speech prepared.
Okay, perfect. That's why you were chosen for this.
Hello, everyone. My name is Madison Trayhall, and I'm a GT Magnet student from Pine Middle School. Even though the Magnet program at my school is in some ways secluded from the rest of the students at my school, I feel like I speak for everyone when I say, the best, the first day of school is the best, and of course, the worst. It's the best because it always seems to go quickly, you get to meet new people, and of course, there isn't very much work. It's the worst day, because you always, you know you have 179 more days of school. And parents always have to take those embarrassing pictures before school. But as with most things, once school starts, it gets easier and better. Once it made sense to me, the schedule seemed to flow a lot better than it did last year. I'm thoroughly looking forward to both of my electives, which fortunately are banned. I play the clarinet and the drums.
Excellent.
My teachers were all welcoming and understanding, which makes it so much better. And I'm really excited for this year. Other than the positives and negatives that all of us as students get so hung up on, I think that it's amazing that we get all of these opportunities, not just as students in America, but in Washoe County, where we have everything from the GT program to opportunities like this, where we, students get to speak our minds before you as administrators of WCSD. After I was presented with this amazing opportunity, I took a minute to think about what I should take out of this opportunity, not only for this year, but into my future, other than the obvious speaking and writing skills. I believe that it's a common goal for everyone to be as best as they can be, right?
Yes.
Whether at school with friends, at home with family, or at work with colleagues. I think that small opportunities like this can improve everything from character to confidence. Even if these things seem like simple characteristics that come naturally to some, take a moment to think to yourself, what opportunities have you taken advantage of that improved you as a person? This is why I'm so thankful for education and opportunities like this. This is why I'm so thankful for things like the GT program. And most of all, this is why I'm thankful for all of Washoe County and all of you for taking time out of your evening to listen to us students. Thank you.
Oh, wow, Madison. Wow. Madison for president.
It's not the first time I've heard that.
Great job, Mr. Boudreau, thank you.
I have my seat.
Yeah, yeah. We're going to follow you, Madison. You're going places.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for your spirit of gratitude, which is something that we, we all like to remind ourselves, that we are very fortunate and we're very grateful. So thanks for that great reminder of that.
Thank you.
Well done.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Alright, so next up, we have O'Brien Middle School, a seventh grader, Stephanie Zarocco with her principal, Ms. Melinda Baker.
Welcome, Stephanie. And welcome, Ms. Baker. Irene.
It was unexpected. She just came because I have to take her to my mom's house, and they brought her over.
Oh, that's wonderful.
But yeah, she wants to speak about her experience, so...
Oh, we're so happy to meet you. We love your...
She doesn't have a script, she doesn't have any...
That's okay, we love your mom.
I didn't know I was going to do this.
Well, look at you, being all impromptu and on the spot. Well, how did it go? Tell us about your first day.
It went pretty well. It was not how I expected. It felt different from elementary school, because you get so many different experiences with new people. And the new teachers, like, you get a switch every hour, and I used to be stuck with the same teacher for the whole six hours of my school day. So it's different seeing new people. And then each teacher has like a different personality, so it's nice seeing each personality of that teacher, because you get to know if you like them or not. Which I like most of my teachers, so I'm pretty happy about that.
Good. Yes, good comeback, yeah.
Outside is big. I didn't expect it to be that big. Because in my elementary school, it was all dirt. And the soccer field was dirt. So I finally got to see grass for the first time. After my full nine years of being in that elementary school, I haven't seen grass. But then I finally went to middle school, and I saw grass. So I'm pretty happy about that. I started like playing with it, I'm like, oh my gosh.
She's a soccer player.
Obviously, yeah.
So every time I fell in the soccer field in my elementary school, it was a pain.
It hurt, yeah, yeah.
Yes, it's just a good day.
Okay, what's your favorite subject so far?
Math.
All these math lovers, yay! We love that.
I love math.
Great.
Like, I can do ELA, but I wouldn't like, it's not a choice. I'd do it to do it. Like, I would choose math over ELA. I like doing numbers, because I can do it by myself.
Great.
But with ELA, oh my gosh.
Well, I'm glad you're sticking with it. That's good, that's good. And so are you going to play, do you play soccer on a team?
Yes, I play soccer. I play soccer out of school. So I'm waiting for the soccer season to come.
Great.
But yeah. But it's in, towards the end of the year, so I'm pretty mad about that.
Yeah.
But it's okay.
That's great. Ms. Baker, anything you want to add?
Just that she is a delight, and that we've had a phenomenal start. She absolutely represents the joy and anticipation that we've been feeling around campus. And thank you for being Johnny on the spot.
Thank you.
Yes, that was great, yeah. Not everybody can speak to a group of people, and to do it without knowing you were going to have to do it, that's a pretty big deal.
I was very nervous.
Well, you did great.
Thank you.
Wonderful, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, and next up, a ninth grader from Inspire, Eddie Barowee with principal Tristan McElhaney.
Welcome, Eddie. Great, thanks. Hi, Mr. McElhaney, nice to see you. Alright, well Eddie, how did the first day go?
It was good.
Good, what'd you do?
We sat in the circle for five periods, talking about the new school rules, and how Inspire has changed more this year.
Were you there last year? Did you go there last year?
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought I recognized you. Were you there when we had lunch, when the food truck came?
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought I remembered you. Great, great. So what's different this year?
Well, like, there's more discipline issues, like, we can't like walk out of class, so like go to the bathroom whenever we want. Like, we couldn't anyways, but, but now you have to have a pass in the hallways. You have like these warning things, and they address how some of the teachers, like, if you do something wrong, then like, they'll address it to you the right way.
Good, okay. What, what's your favorite subject in school?
History.
Great, excellent. Is there a favorite time in history that's most interesting to you?
Oh, the Korean War.
Ooh, interesting, wow, great, alright. Yes, ma'am?
Thank you, Eddie, that's fantastic. Why the Korean War?
Oh, I just like, because a lot of people forget the Korean War, because it's not one of them big wars in history, but it kind of, it's still going on to this day.
Very interesting.
So I thought it was important, and I like learning about it, and I learn something new each time I learn about it.
Awesome, very cool.
Tell us something about the Korean War that most people don't know.
Like, it started with, like, because Korea was like the one whole big thing at some time, sometime. And then the Kim Dynasty started, and then they separated into South Korea and North Korea. And then, I think, that's when war started between South Korea and North Korea, and then the US got into it somehow.
Awesome, thank you. I did not know that. Thank you.
Great, thanks, okay. Well, if there's anything you would like to tell the Board of Trustees about your, your school or your school experience, is there anything you'd like us to know?
I'd like to stay there.
Good, good, that's great. Great to hear that. Good, it's a great environment. And Mr. McElhaney is your new, your new principal?
Welcome, my. It's an incredible place to be, I love it.
Good, great. Okay, well, thank...
We're very, very proud of your new principal.
Yes, thank you so much. Okay, anything else you want to add? Okay, thanks so much, Eddie, and have a great year.
Alright, and now from, now from North Star, a 10th grader Cooper Berry with principal Katie Hadley.
Cooper, wow, knocking it out of the park. Look at this guy. Oh, man, very impressive. Shine shoes, too. Thank you, Cooper. Well, welcome. The floor's yours.
Hello, my, my name is Cooper Berry, and I'm a student at North Star Online School. Well, you asked me, I was asked here today to talk about my first day of school. Well, you asked me, uh, I was asked here today to, uh, talk about my first day of school. But I think I should start, um, to, about telling you what it wasn't. It was sim, it was not a mad rush to find my classes before the bell rang in the morning. It was not a challenge to try nor distractions left and right to keep me from understanding what the teacher was trying to teach. And it was not full of anxiety being bumped around left and right to navigate the hallways to find, uh, my next class. Instead, my, uh, first day at North Star was very calm, peaceful, collected. And I owe this experience to North Star because of three main reasons. Uh, the flexibility of its, uh, schedule, its incredible staff, and, uh, being able to study from wherever I desire. So, uh, to elaborate a little bit more, the flexibility of North Star is simply the best I've ever had at any school. On my first day of school, I chose what, uh, order I would study my classes and what times I would study them. Uh, and this privilege, uh, encourages me to be more, uh, independent and, uh, self-responsible. It is, uh, uh, also allowed me to, uh, play my cello without worry of conflicting schedules, as well as take American Sign Language up at TMCC during school hours. So I simply love that. Uh, and there, and then there are the teachers. Holy moly, where do I even start to begin with the teachers, uh, of North, uh, and staff of North Star? All the staff and people, the whole team there is just so, uh, welcoming and encouraging. I, I have no idea if I would've even survived, um, an online school, uh, if it hadn't been for them. So I, they're just so supportive, supportive kind and caring to me, not just me, but other students around me. Um, and with their guidance, I've been successful and have built not only more self-confidence in myself, but, uh, opened myself up and my willingness to engage with others, um, has skyrocketed. So I cannot thank them enough for, uh, investing that level of, uh, time and effort into myself. Um, and so, uh, finally, North Star brings me, uh, gives me the ability to study wherever I want. Uh, and this is a fantastic part of why I love, uh, online schools so much. Working from anywhere is such an amazing sense of freedom. I can pop in and out of classes at home, at TMCC, or the North Star campus. So I guess the only downside of that is I don't have an excuse not to get my work done. So all of what I just said brings me to my main point. I want to thank all of you. Thank you so much for allowing and, uh, creating this school. Um, North Star is such an incredible fit for me and has allowed me to grow and learn in a safe and encouraging environment that works just so well for me and others, uh, just like me. And so for that, I'm very, very grateful. My first day of school was awesome and I hope to have much more like it with North Star. So, thank you so much.
Oh, great. Cooper, thank you. And Mrs. Hadley, thank you and, and your staff for the great work that, uh, gets done at North Star. And any of you that have not visited the North Star Online Campus, it's pretty impressive, so.
Please do.
And we're excited for you, Cooper, and hope you have a great year and, uh, would love to hear you play your cello sometime.
Thank you so much.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Now we go. From Worcester, an 11th grader. Nadia Lopez and Principal Leah Kuchar.
Welcome, Nadia.
Hi.
Nice to see you. I don't see Ms. Kuchar. Is she here?
Oh, we have Ms. Branca.
Is Ms. Branca filling in? Ms. Branca is one of the assistant principals.
Yes, Ms. Branca, welcome. Is this your mom?
Yes, my mom.
Wonderful. Hi.
Hi.
So what can you tell us about your first day with the Colts as an 11th grader?
Um, well, first of all, my name's Nadia Lopez-Gara. I'm a junior at Worcester High School. And, um, I participate in a lot of sports. I will say that. I like to stay on top of my things. And, well, one thing that I like most about Worcester is the atmosphere and how everyone gets along. There's no one that's really left out. There's a group for everyone. And, um, my first day of school, it was pretty exciting. I had to wake up at 5:20 cuz I had to go to soccer practice in the morning at 6:00. And, um, again, after school, I had to go at 3:45. But between the classes, it was fun like usual. I did hear the same speech seven times, but it's okay. So now I know what to do and what not to do. As well as, um, all the teachers at Worcester, they like to be really engaged with students, knowing what their students like, what they dislike, how they could make their classroom a better learning environment for everyone else as well as themselves. And also, during lunch, that's when you saw a lot of the new kids, the incoming freshmen. They were asking a lot for help. And as us being upperclassmen, we'd go out there and we'd decide to help because
Great.
we were there one time and they were helping us as well.
That's great.
Also, it feel, it feels good now to be a junior because now I know there's only one year left. It's sad to see cuz also, like, all the sports and everything, it's sad, but I know it'll get better as it goes. But Worcester overall, I really liked it going in my freshman year. I thought it was a great school. And till this day, right now, I still think it's a great school. And I see it a lot as very welcoming to everyone else. Also, the first day, I got stopped in the halls by a parent asking me if I could interpret for her in the office. And I decided to go and help. And when I helped, they actually told her that her daughter would get accepted. She could regist, she could register her daughter. And she said that I was a really, oh, a really heartwarming person because I decided to help her. She said that no one else has ever done that. And I just did it out of my way because I know how hard it is when someone doesn't know how to speak English or there's no one really there that could help them to translate. So I decided to go out of my way and help someone else, which I know probably made their day and made my day to go out there and help someone else.
Oh, nice, Nadia. Thank you. That was great. That's great. Well, we're very proud of you for, for doing that cuz, as you said, not everybody would. And what a wonderful thing. And like you said, it made your heart warm, too.
Thank you.
That's wonderful. Great example to other kids. Yes, please.
Thank you, Madam President. Okay, you said, and we know you play soccer. You said you like to do a lot of sports. What else do you participate in at Worcester?
Soccer, basketball, and softball.
Oh, so you're busy.
Yeah. And I do it because I like to play and as well as me wanting to play, it makes me say, okay, I'm the type to, I don't just wanna be in my class. I wanna get that A because I know I can get it. And me playing the sports that I play, it's more of like, I'll keep my A in order to play. Like, I always think about it. Not a B, it's always an A, not, no B, no nothing. I need that A to always play.
That's great.
That's awesome.
Oh, and I'm also in upward bound. This summer, I didn't, I was not able to participate in the, in the resid, residential area where they stay overnight, go to school. I went to TMCC and I took, uh, Community Health Science 101. I decided to take that class and it really, it really, it made me learn a lot because I s, I see things different and different perspectives now. We talked, we talked a lot about the community and like people's health and global warming and everything like that. And to me, I like to learn new things, not just stick to the same things because I see it as in a new opportunity for me to say, oh, I see this this way, there's another way, and everything just comes together at the end of the day.
Excellent. Do you know what you wanna do after high school?
I wanna be a dentist.
Excellent. Good for you. That's great. That's great. Doctor President, yeah. That's great. Anything else you wanna tell us?
That's pretty much it.
That's great. Nadia, thank you. We're very proud of you. Thanks so much, Ms. Branca. And thank you, Mrs. Lopez, for being here, too. That's great.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. And our final student is from Reno High School, a 12th grader. Kathleen Bradley and Principal Chris Hackbush.
All right, welcome, Kathleen. And Mr. Hackbush, nice to see you. Well, how did your first day go?
It went really well. Um, I'm in the leadership class at school, so my main job the whole day was just welcoming everybody and trying to establish our heightened school spirit. So it was really fun for me cuz I get to, you know, shout and yell the whole day. So I, I like that.
Were you tired at the end of the day?
Yes. I'm tired at the end of every school day. But that's okay. That's how I know I was productive.
Oh, that's great. So what's leadership working on?
Right now, we are planning our Welcome Back Week, which starts this next Monday. Um, so that's, the whole week is pretty much dedicated to establishing what Reno High is about and teaching especially our underclassmen our values of respect, honor, and strength.
Excellent. Okay, what's your favorite subject?
English, 100%. If I could be in my class every day, all day, I would. But I know that's not practical, so I still go to math.
And what about, um, plans after high school?
I'm planning on going to college, so I have a couple of schools on my list right now and I'll start applications in a few weeks.
Yeah, okay. What's on your list?
Ooh, let's think. Okay, UNR, University of Utah, Chapman, Occidental, Gonzaga.
Wow.
Those are my main five right now.
Wow. Well, I'm sure you won't have any trouble getting accepted and being successful wherever you wanna go.
Thank you.
That's great. Any other questions anybody wants to ask? Yes, Dr. Taylor?
You're, you're very impressive as a, as a senior, so you, I'm sure you've given some thought to, what do you wanna do after college?
After college? I have a couple of different interests that I might pursue. Um, one is psychology, um, and the other is political science. I've really been exposed to that through my We the People program at school.
Yeah.
And even though I've only been in it for a total of two days now, I'm in love. So I can see myself going down that path.
All right, great. Well, it's a lot of work. I, I've been able to help judge, uh, the rehearsals for, uh, We the People and, um, I am so impressed. You kids are so much smarter than I am. I'm, it's very, very impressive.
Thank you.
Mr. Hackbush, you wanna add anything?
I would just say she'd be very, very humble right now. I mean, to balance leadership with We the People is very rare. Only a few students can do that, uh, because of the hours outside of the classroom and then on top of all the APs she's doing. But the leadership, uh, students yesterday were amazing. They had, at every, um, entry to our school, we had three to four students there greeting every student. So, uh, you know, and they're always, you know, students are coming in, they don't know where they're going. They got their schedules, they're scared to death. And it really just eased the hallways immediately. So without their leadership, cuz that's where the tradition is passed on, it doesn't work. So they did a great job.
That's great. Well, thank you for all of that. Thanks for all that hard work.
Of course.
Wonderful. We're very proud of you. Anybody have questions? Any other questions to ask? All right. All right. Well, have a great year and good luck with your college applications.
Thank you.
It's gonna be great. Okay, all right. Excellent. Thank you, Dr. Parks. Wanna add anything?
Yeah, I do. Uh, so what I would say is just, uh, thank you to all the families and the schools for making the time to come and celebrate with, with our students. Uh, as I started off, I did say yesterday was quite possibly the greatest day of the year for educators. And, uh, I think each one of our students kinda gave you a reminder of why we do what we do and kinda calmed us all down and we reminded, that's why we come to school, that's why we go to work.
That's great. Well, and a big thank you to all of our educators, to all of the families that, uh, supported these kids getting to school yesterday, to all of our staff members, uh, throughout the district that helped it be a great day yesterday, our transportation folks, our school secretaries, our nutrition services folks, everybody top to bottom. Uh, it's a real team effort and, uh, it was a great day. And, uh, Dr. Parks and the area superintendents, I know you were all out at schools with interim superintendent McNeil. So we are very grateful for the dedication to our children, uh, that everybody in the Washoe County School District shows. So thank you, Dr. Parks. All right. Anybody wanna add anything? Okay. All right. Well, thanks again. Great to have those students here. Okay. We will now come back to item 2.18, which is possible action to approve the reappointment to the Sexuality, Health, and Responsibility Education SHARE Advisory Committee of Sarah Kaiser, Lydia DeFlorio, and Kelly Roper as parent guardian representatives, Brent Brooks as the religion representative for terms ending June 30th, 2021, the new appointments of Sylvia Gonzalez, parent guardian, and Cassie Levesque, counselor for terms ending June 30th, 2021, and the new appointment of Andrea Thompson in the medical nursing category for a term ending June 30th, 2020. And what I'd like to do is go ahead and hear from, uh, the folks who are here to make comment, if that's all right with our colleagues. Uh, so let's go ahead and we'll start, uh, public comment. Thank you, JJ. And I will ask, um, as we always do when we have a big crowd, uh, that we give everybody respect and that, um, we all be respectful in our comments and that we try to avoid, you know, applause or booing or any kind of commentary on other people's comments, um, so that we can have a respectful proceeding. And everybody has the opportunity to be fully heard, uh, for their three minutes. So we'll go ahead.
I do want to add real quick for the record that I do ha, I have received notice, um, that, um, the, those listed on the SHARE Committee have been given the proper notice, um, per open, Nevada Open
Gotcha.
regarding 21-day notice.
Thank you. Okay.
Bill Muck.
Mr. Muck, welcome. Thank you for your email.
Good afternoon, Dr. McNeil and the distinguished visitor, distinguished members of the board. I'd like to open off with a question. Where can I get one of those yogurt beach cards? Thank you for allowing me to speak. I, uh, I would like to support my voice, my support for the renomination of Pastor Brent Brooks to your SHARE Committee. I personally known Pastor Brooks for several years and I found him to be nothing less than a very honorable man with high moral character. His, his voice of reason is precisely what is needed on the SHARE Committee. I urge you to approve his appoint, his reappointment. It's no secret to anyone right now that the Washoe County School District is in, is, is under very intense scrutiny, that there is a, a, a public crisis confidence. And this is the time that you can act. This is the time for you to demonstrate leadership that your constituents have given in you, have placed in you. The confidence that they have given in imparting your jobs is being called into question. You, my friends, have the opportunity to respond with leadership and with firm resolution. Every move is being watched. You know that. This is a time for you to demonstrate that the people who elected you were not in vain, that they were not placing their confidence in you mistakenly. This is an opportunity to do the right thing and to reappoint a man who brings the voice of balance and reason to our committee at a time when it's needed at the most. We're not here to debate the merits of what is being taught in this SHARE program. That is your job. However, our concern is that committee maintains a fair and balanced perspective. Ladies and gentlemen, Brent Brooks is the right man for this balance and this perspective. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Muck.
Angelo Austria.
Pastor Austria, welcome.
Thank you so much for the opportunity and I just wanna, uh, first of all, just to honor every single one of you for the job well done. And, uh, um, I am, um, in definitely support of Brent Brooks to be, um, reappointed. Unfortunately, there are some misunderstandings about Mr. Brooks', uh, part on, uh, on the SHARE Committee. Uh, there are some, uh, somewhat I would consider rumors about some misinformation. And my thing, uh, the biggest thing for me is that, um, this just has nothing to do with religious beliefs. I believe that this is a man that just believes in our community, cares about our children as all, we, we all do. And, uh, so for Brent to be considered, um, as, uh, some would say and just, um, would, uh, kind of spread out some lies or rumors or somewhat not so, um, uh, just, I don't think it's fair of what's happening here. But I believe that this man is a man of integrity, uh, a man who cares about our community and a man who has done a lot for our city. And I believe that you are people of wisdom. who has done a lot for our city. And I believe that you are people of wisdom and discerning, and I believe that you will do well by allowing Mr. Brent Brooks to continue to serve you. He will serve you well. I guarantee you that. He has the best interest at heart for our children, for our community, and for our schools, and he is right behind you, and he will support you and honor you continually. So I am for, for that, and I appreciate you for taking the time to allow me to speak and just kind of share my heart. This man is definitely, definitely should be considered for the position. And he served you well for a couple of years. So thank you again for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Sean Pennell.
Ms. Pennell, welcome. You have three minutes.
Thank you. And I'd like to also give honor to all of you. Thank you, Dr. McNeil, for stepping up in a very difficult time, and thank you all for your leadership. School and education is so important. I'm a former public school teacher myself, and so I know the impact that we can have on students, and it's lasting. I think in this kind of situation, it's so important that we close the door to fear and miscommunication and open it to love, strength, and balance, which I know that is what, what you are doing in, in having this meeting. I would also like to stand in strong support of retaining Brent Brooks on the SHARE Curriculum Committee. I was at the previous board meeting in June and appreciated that Pastor Brent brought balance to the conversation. I myself have a traditional view of sexuality, regardless of my religion. My, my view of sexuality is that of a traditional view. And I appreciate that he brought that to the table. Pastor Brent has a background in law and public, in the public arena, and like all of you, all of the committee members, they have courage. And I think that's really what we need here, is that we need people who have courage, because these are difficult situations. But we have 60, I think 60,000, more than 60,000 students in our, in our school district, and not all of them are the same. And so we need to show courage and display courage by the people that we put on our committees, that they're going to be able to represent the, the families and the children of, of multiplicity and to show true diversity and true inclusion. So as a community, I know that we're moving forward, we're moving, we're all moving into new territory. But I also believe that in order to show diversity, true diversity, both for the LGBT community as well as those with a traditional view of sexuality, that it shows great courage to have Brent there because he is courageous. He is, he is a man of courage. He's a man of integrity, but he's a man of courage. And he is a loving man, and I believe that he will serve you, serve our communities, serve our children well, and that no one will say that it was a bad choice, if they truly show courage. The other people on them, I know at least one of them, she's also very courageous, a strong personality. And so we need to balance, we need to balance such an important committee. And so thank you for allowing me a few minutes to share my, my thoughts and views, and I trust that you will make a really good decision, discerning, thank you, a discerning decision.
Thanks, Ms. Pennell. And you will get a beep at 30 seconds left. So that first beep, you don't have to stop just for everybody's.
Linda Park.
I'm sorry, last name? Park. Ms. Park, welcome.
Hello. It's nice to be with you today. My name is Linda Park. I was past president of California School Board. So I commend you for what you're doing.
Well, thank you for your service.
You're welcome. I recognize that it's a lot of work. And today I'm here because I want to discuss my view, and I hope yours, about diversity. I find that eliminating certain groups because we don't like what they say or who they are is a really bad path to go upon. And I would discourage this board from even considering not having a variety of opinions. You know, inclusiveness is a word that includes, it doesn't separate. And when we're looking at the variety of children and their backgrounds that are coming to us, it's really important for those kids to understand that you can accept someone else's difference of opinion and still be their friend, and still have a relationship with them. And I find the opposite is going on in our country. It's been a very polarizing time where people have taken their, their side, this is my team, this is my team, and we're going to attack one another. And I find that to be reprehensible. You know, the fact that Pastor Brooks comes to you with a difference of opinion should not be in the least bit concerning to you. In fact, I find strength in diversity of opinion. I would hate to see this board go down the path of excluding anyone they disagree with. I find that to be very destructive corporately to all of the children and to, to this community. So diversity can be our strength, but only if it's truly a diverse group of opinions. And let the majority win. If the majority of people believe that it should be a certain way, then isn't that what democracy was built on? Isn't that who we really are? Isn't at our core what we really want? So I would encourage you to include or continue to include Pastor Brooks on this committee. And I want to thank you again for the service that you provide to this community. I appreciate it and what you're doing. I appreciate the interim superintendent and her willingness to serve. Thank you so much. And I recognize that some of the board members will be leaving us this year. Thank you for your service. You've been very much appreciated.
Thank you, Ms. Park. And I do want to remind folks, we have interpretation services. So if anyone needs an interpreter, and I'm sorry I didn't point that out at the beginning of the meeting, but there is interpreter services if you just go to the front desk.
Eric Henry.
Mr. Henry, welcome. You have three minutes?
Three minutes. Fantastic. So again, my name is Eric Henry. How you guys doing? He already took my line. I was gonna say if I told you guys about my first day at school, could I get a card too? So apparently that's not gonna happen. But I, I wanted to also say what everyone else has said. I really appreciate what you guys are doing, and thank you for what you're doing with this district. I was so encouraged to hear the first day of school from these kids, the joy, their excitement. And to me, that's why I'm here. And I know that's why you're all here and why the audience is here. We're here for the students, to provide them an environment to learn, to give them some education, and give them an opportunity to succeed. And I'm, I'm with you guys, too. It's leaned like Madison for president. I'll be on that committee, too. So the reason I'm here is 48 hours ago, it was brought to my attention that there's been a concerted effort to tell some lies about Mr. Brooks, him serving on the SHARE committee and trying to block his reappointment. I've known Brent ever since he's moved to Reno. I've actually served with Brent for the last seven years on a separate board. There is not a finer man that can demonstrate the character, the care and understanding for, for others that Brent does. And it's been very evident in the last seven years, his professionalism in consideration for others' points of view. Brent suggested, I've been to almost every single SHARE committee meeting, and Brent suggested a couple of meetings back, that the need for the SHARE curriculum to be fully inclusive. And I agree with Brent that traditional views of sexuality should also be represented in that curriculum. So my, I would urge each one of you that you would reappoint Brent to the SHARE committee for this next term. And again, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Henry.
James Bentham.
Welcome, Mr. Bentham. You have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is James Bentham. The reason I'm here is that I'm concerned about the children and education in Washoe County. I'm here to support Brent Brooks' reappointment to the SHARE committee. I support Brent for several reasons. One is that he is a voice for many people that believe in traditional sexuality and values. His voice should not be silenced because anyone opposes these views. I believe that the, the board and the SHARE committee should be willing to discuss the pros and cons to different issues, and then choosing the best that will support our, our children in education in Washoe County. Not only does Brent Brooks represent traditional values, he's also a lawyer and brings legal expertise to the board. America is a melting pot of ideas. In the founding of our country, many different ideas were brought up and discussed. Quite often, there was wild rhetoric, but eventually they came to a consensus that resulted in our country today, which is an exceptional country. I expect the, the committee and the board to be able to discuss issues, the pros and cons, and choose the best. I, I support you in your decision, and I urge you to reappoint Brent Brooks to the SHARE committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bentham.
Tyler Baldovinus.
Welcome, Tyler. Thanks for the clarification. You have three minutes.
Thank you, Madam President. So I speak against Brent Brooks' reappointment to the SHARE committee. Now, people who aren't supportive of Brent Brooks say that the Washoe County School District should live up to its values of inclusion and diversity. And I agree. And we should start by saying that we, the LGBTQ community of Washoe County, and the students, and the students who are on the LGBTQ spectrum in your school district should be accepted, and they should have a curriculum that accepts them, validates their experiences, and teaches them the skills that they need to survive in a modern world with modern understanding and new scientific consensus on their issues. And Brent Brooks has made it abundantly clear that he believes people like myself don't really deserve to live. We are scum, we are sinners, and we're less than human. And how can somebody who believes that represent this school district's value of inclusion and diversity? You want to talk about a statement to what the students, to your students? Reappointing a man like that tells a six-year-old transgender kid that we don't care about you. And you're telling a closeted 14-year-old boy who is just learning for the very first time how to fall in love that we don't care about you. You can do whatever you want. LGBTQ youth are four times more likely to commit suicide than their straight peers. How are you going to reconcile that knowledge with Brent Brooks' values and his opinions? And yeah, they are his opinions, but they are opinions that lead to death and violence against people who just want to live and be accepted into their communities. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Tyler.
Tim McGivney.
Mr. McGivney, did we get your name right?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Welcome.
I didn't prepare a long speech. I just know Brent Brooks personally. He's a great man. I would like to put my opinion that he should be reappointed. So that's it.
Okay.
Keep it simple.
Thank you.
Yvonne Allen.
Welcome, Yvonne. Nice to see you again.
Good evening, everyone. Good to see you all. So I'm not here to attack anyone's character, or anyone's values, or anything of that sort. On the contrary, I'm here to thank Brent Brooks for always being honest and transparent about his unwavering beliefs. It is great for his followers, but I just really don't think it's great for our public schools. The most dangerous thing that organization can say is, this is how we've always done it. That's how systematic oppression and discrimination works. Just because something is customary, that does not mean that it's right, and it doesn't mean that you should keep doing that. Dr. Angie, you taught me that. You taught me that that's what systematic oppression looks like. You taught me that we've always done it this way is what creates institutional bias against every marginalized group. School districts used to always only have white teachers. They only did it that way. That doesn't mean it was right. We can't keep this mentality unless we want to remain biased and discriminatory. With the SHARE program, Lesson One, it's not a question of whether or not the LGBT inclusion and, and education needs to be in the curriculum. The law has honestly already decided that. So why are we having someone on the committee who is fighting to have that not included or to have bias and beliefs included? I ask that we do not, that the Board of Trustees does not automatically reappoint Brent Brooks, but instead allows other religious representatives a chance to even apply. Brent makes Lesson One start at an automatic disadvantage. It is systematically holding back LGBTQ inclusion. President Simon said recently in emails that Pastor Brooks does have a point of view that is not universally supported or agreed with. So why is he the representative for the religions? At a January 30 SHARE committee, Brent specified that with gender identity lesson, we are moving away from traditional sex education and moving to more, towards something that's diversity education. Correct! That's what we want. That's the whole point of this. And please don't get it, get it wrong that by traditional education, he means homophobic and transphobic education. SHARE One has six slides. It says heterosexual twice, gay once. The entire example on Slide 4 is just about heterosexual. So there's no leaning towards one way or another. The 14th Amendment is being used to scare you right now. We are not creating a law, and we are not prohibiting the exercise of religion in their, in churches or in homes. We're just saying not in our schools. Brent has specifically even stated that sex is between a man and a woman, and that it's only with chromosomes. He's telling us what he believes. We don't, we don't need those beliefs and opinions within our schools. You all have an opportunity right now to do away with this is what we've always done mentality, to stop systematic oppression of the LGBTQ community and to stop institutional bias. Please do what's right. Thank you.
Thank you, Yvonne.
Cesar Manera.
Board members, thank you very much for the difficult job that you guys hold here. I don't want to repeat what everybody has been saying about, about Pastor Brent. You can see, I, I don't think it will be necessary. I have known him for about 10 years, and I would probably tell you that when the time came to look for a mentor, personally for me, I couldn't find a better person than him. And unless people are able to read the mind of the pastors and the ministers to say that we are homophobic is completely wrong. What Pastor Brent has been doing all along by serving the SHARE committee has been trying to keep in place, in this case, the traditional view of sexuality. I believe in inclusion, and every group should be respected. I have said in previous meetings, as ministers, we have a mandate to love everyone, and that means regardless of their lifestyle. We are to love everyone. But see, inclusion and diversity has become a huge word. And the interesting thing is that we talk about inclusion, yet we're trying to exclude faith by calling it belief, and we all have beliefs. Every single person that came to this podium is talking about their beliefs. So there is no such a thing as we are the only ones with a belief. Every single person has a belief, and that is what we're speaking out of. So to keep it inclusive and to keep it diverse, we need that voice in there. And I could just ask a question, a very valid question. By now, you guys figure that I have never come here to attack, but just to bring some point of view that might be of interest. As I look at the board, there are no Hispanic members on the board. So I could be here talking about, well, how come we don't have Hispanics on the board? So to exclude him or not to reelect him, it will be all the opposite of inclusion and diversity. So he hasn't been working against removing anybody, but he has been saying, let's include all the points of view. And if I can just repeat it one more time- And if I can just repeat it one more time, he has been saying, "Let's include the traditional view of sexuality," and that is pretty much what he has been doing. I understand that it's a very difficult work that you guys do. Please really consider it, because you would be excluding a huge part of our community by not reelecting him. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pastor Manera.
Crystal Manera.
Welcome, Ms. Manera.
Good afternoon, President Holland and Board members. I am here to strongly encourage the reappointment of Pastor Brent Brooks. I believe that he has held the position with grace, integrity, and the utmost respect for every single person that has been a part of the process. Not only that, he's been extremely knowledgeable. If we speak to the position he holds, it's a very difficult one in this time that we are living in. And as others have said, he has held it, I believe, with great courage, and again, just great respect for everyone. The same way that I expect any of the other members on the SHARE Committee to speak to their area of expertise, that is exactly the same thing I have expected from Pastor Brent, and he has done just that. I wouldn't expect the nurse or the parent guardians to speak on anything else rather than the area that they are called to be on the committee. And I believe that he has done that very knowledgeably, and that he has been able to represent our community in a great way. And I do want to clarify, because I was extremely saddened and disheartened over the last few days to see the amount of defamation, slandering, and bullying that has happened on social media. And I believe that's something that we discourage in our schools. So, I'm not sure why it is happening with adults. So, maybe we need to take them back to school and talk to them a little bit about that. But I can clarify, and I highly encourage anyone to go back and review committee meetings, the SHARE Committee meetings. Pastor Brent has never said to exclude any specific material in regards to the LGBTQ community. He has said, "I understand that this is a part of today and that it needs to exist, but can we also include traditional values?" He's never said to remove. He said, "Let's present them both, because we do understand the times and the community that we live in." I would also say that if he were to be removed, I think it would show that there's efforts, not just to have a religious person, but to have a religious person with an agenda. And I don't believe that's what our board wants. I don't believe that's what we want to echo throughout our community. As others have said, we need balanced perspective, and he has done just that. I believe that he is the best person that we can have on the board for this position. Again, I encourage, and in the short time that I have available, I want, I'm not sure if many of you knew about a young lady called Emily Hernandez Medina. She had a 5.3 GPA at North Valleys High School, recently graduated this last year, and was not able to give her speech because it wasn't a popular opinion, because she did have a tough time in high school as a first-generation Latina, and she was barred from giving her initial speech. I would hate to see that happen in our committees and our boards as well. I believe that he brings balanced perspective, and he should be reappointed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Manera.
Kermit Sherybrock.
Would you pronounce your last name for us, Mr.?
Kermit Sharon.
Sharon Brock. Thank you. Welcome.
Yes. Let's see. I moved to Reno 45 years ago from Northern California, basically in my 20s, young guy. All I cared about was skiing and fishing. Finally settled down, married. My wife and I had three children that we proudly put through Washoe County School System, two of which graduated from the University of Nevada. And we now have proudly our grandchildren in the Washoe County School System. We're very pleased in that regard. Now, I have been a part of Reno Christian Fellowship as a worshipper for four years under Brent Brooks, preaching. He, to me, is a man of compassion. And I say that because whenever there was ever a national calamity, a hate shooting, which we all grieve, he would not preach until he addressed the issue. He was very straightforward, how his heart was heavy, and he would pray with the congregation for the survivors. He never once skipped any of the horrible things that are happening in our country with these shootings and with these hate crimes. To me, he is a man of compassion. There is no malice, there is no hatred in the heart of Brent Brooks. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sharon Brock.
Randall Hicks.
Mr. Hicks, welcome.
My name's Randy, actually.
Randy, okay. Welcome.
And I represent the Northern Nevada Pastors Fellowship, of which Brent Brooks is a member and a friend. I wanted to just share some statistics, if I could. It's kind of my mainstay. As of 2017, according to statistics, less than 5% of Americans identified themselves as homosexual. 15% identified themselves as nonreligious or atheist or agnostic, while 70% identified themselves as Christian. And I know that's not exclusive, because there's members of the LGBT community that identify as Christians as well. But I want you to know that Brent Brooks doesn't just represent pastors. He represents the majority of Americans in their faith and in our Christian faith. If inclusive means inclusive, then how can you exclude the religious aspect of everyday life? And how can you disregard somebody's belief because it happens to be in opposition to a politically and socially trending idea? Everybody, as somebody has always said, everybody has beliefs. But Brent Brooks is a representative, as should be, of a religion that is the principles that America was founded on. Somebody in one of the blogs quoted John Adams, but the quote I'd like to use is that John Adams said, "America was created as a Christian nation, period." And so, to include a religious representative on the SHARE Committee is only right, because it represents a majority opinion, if you consider those statistics to be accurate. So, even if the 5% is 10%, or the 15% of agnostics is 20%, you're still dealing with minority opinions. And so, we need to have an inclusive representative. I know Brent Brooks, and I know he's not trying to vilify the LGBT community. He's not trying to exclude. We've had conversations about the SHARE Committee, and that it's a known thing that there has to be inclusive of all views. And so, as a representative, I would highly recommend you put him back on the board, or back on the committee, so that he can represent my faith and many of your faiths, too. His beliefs are important, because that's what drives us all.
Thank you, Pastor Hicks.
Karen Foster.
Ms. Foster, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today, and thank you for all that you do, often under a great amount of duress. We appreciate you very, very much. I am Reverend Karen Foster. I'm the parent of a Washoe County High School student and minister of the Unitarian Universalist Fellowship of Northern Nevada. A tremendous amount of work went into the recent creation and revision of the SHARE curriculum, and as you know, sadly, it was not passed, even though it had the input of many professionals. And what I would like to say to you today is that if you are to appoint a religious person onto the SHARE Committee with the charge of bringing the religious perspective of our community, that person must be able to represent the religious views of all people, all religious views objectively. And that indeed would be a very tall order for anyone. And I say that as a religious leader myself. And so, perhaps you might consider that there should be more than one position for a religious perspective on the SHARE Committee to allow for a breadth of viewpoints that more fully represent our community. The district and the board, you have adopted a policy that strongly recognizes and supports valuing, respect, and inclusiveness for all of our students, regardless of race, ethnicity, gender identity, and sexual orientation, and other aspects of our 64,000 students. All appointees to your committees must be willing to adhere to that policy. So, I would remind you today of your policy of inclusiveness. What we offer in the SHARE curriculum has the potential to save lives or destroy lives. And so, that material must be created and revised from an inclusive, statistically-proven perspective, utilizing the expertise of a wide range of health and mental health professionals, not the narrow opinions of a few. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Foster.
Stephen Page.
Mr. Page, welcome. You have three minutes.
My name is Stephen Page. I'm here today on behalf of the Human Rights Campaign, HRC, the nation's largest LGBTQ-plus civil rights organization, and very here today to express concern about the reappointment of Brent Brooks to the SHARE Advisory Committee. Mr. Brooks is vocally against LGBTQ-plus inclusion in the sex ed curriculum and has adamantly demanded that religious beliefs be added to the curriculum instead of scientifically-based facts. As the religious representative on the committee, Mr. Brooks has used his religion as an excuse to advocate against the LGBTQ community and students who identify as so. His exclusive beliefs do not represent the opinion of Washoe County as a whole, nor do they represent the beliefs of the entire faith community. Mr. Brooks argues that traditional views of sexuality should also be represented in the curriculum so that it is fully inclusive. In reality, traditional views have always been included in the sex ed curriculum and will always continue to be representative. But Brooks' argument here perpetuates the false idea that once anti-LGBTQ beliefs override the acceptable livelihoods of LGBTQ-plus people. Believing solely in traditional views, I use air quotes there, because that's a pretty loose term. As Yvonne stated earlier, that basically is a good term to describe homophobia. But traditional views, people who believe in traditional views, that does not mean that other views of sexuality are not valid. And somebody's anti-equality opinion does not erase our existence. I've said this before, before you all, and I'll continue to say it until everyone understands, but gay and transgender people exist. We are here, and we are here regardless of people's opinion of us. And we have a right to relevant education, just like every other student. Unfortunately, we believe that Brent Brooks cares more about anti-equality views than about LGBTQ-plus students. If Mr. Brooks wants to be a representative on the SHARE Committee, he should be ready and willing to represent every single student, including those who do identify as LGBTQ-plus. Students in Washoe County deserve to have an inclusive, comprehensive education, which is why HRC urges the board to oppose the reappointment of Brent Brooks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Page.
Dina Wiggins.
Ms. Wiggins?
She might be in another room.
She's coming? Is she coming?
After Ms. Wiggins, David Davy.
Welcome, Ms. Wiggins. You have three minutes.
My name is Dina Wiggins. I came out of retirement and drove all the way out of beautiful Washoe Valley to come here this afternoon to express to you my tremendous support for Brent Brooks. If anyone has a positive view of all people, that would be Brent. And I don't know where all this stuff is coming, that he's, you know, the things that have been said about him. So, again, I urge you and strongly encourage you to reappoint him. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wiggins.
I'm going to go back and be done, and go back to my retirement now.
All right. Enjoy. Enjoy.
David Davy, then Pam Corgan.
Mr. Davy, welcome.
I think I used up half of my time just trying to get your on crutches.
We didn't start your time yet.
My name is David Davy, and I've been happily married for 50 years, and I'm living proof that a monogamous heterosexual relationship is not only possible but rewarding, fulfilling, and well worth it. The fact is that many others can testify to that, too. When my grandchildren, who are in the school district, here receive their sex education, I want them to know that this is an acceptable pathway to pursue. I have before me an email that has been circulating, which is attempting to have Pastor Brent Brooks removed from this committee. The email is inflammatory and full of false information. Facts are that Pastor Brooks has not fought LGBTQ inclusion, as claimed, but has instead stood up for inclusion of traditional values on sexuality like those of mine. The author of the email states, "We want inclusion, equality, and facts," but resorts to false statements, name-calling, and exclusion. This is the very definition of hypocrisy. I deny, or to deny reappointment of Pastor Brooks is to acquiesce to tactics reminiscent of those of a playground bully. I hope that this board will truly stand for inclusion by not excluding a huge portion of the population who maintain traditional views on sexuality. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Davy. Thank you for braving the journey on your crutches. Hope you feel better.
Pam Corgan, then Mako Hernandez.
Welcome, Ms. Corgan.
Thank you so much. I appreciate all of you, the service that you're rendering here. It is an honor to be here among people, a whole roomful of people, that have a heart for children. And I was absolutely delighted with all of the smiles as the kids told their stories of the first day of school. My name is Pam Corgan. I am a retired Washoe County school teacher.
Thank you.
My children have gone kindergarten through high school, through all Washoe County schools. I am also director of a 501(c)(3) here in Reno locally. We connect women all across our valley to serve organizations and ministries throughout this area as the hands and feet of Christ. I'm here today to support Pastor Brent Brooks. It's my understanding he was appointed to this committee as the religion representative. It's my understanding that his position on this committee would be to present that point of view to the committee. I've known Pastor Brooks for nearly 20 years. I have known him to be a man of vision, a man of fairness, a man of compassion, a man of inclusion, and a man of love. I have seen him and witnessed him for these many years, loving every person that he has met. So, I strongly, strongly encourage you to reappoint Brent Brooks to the SHARE Committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Corgan, and thank you for serving students as a teacher in our district.
You're so welcome.
Mako Hernandez, then Josh Damon.
Mr. Hernandez, welcome.
I will be translating for Mr. Hernandez.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. He is the leader, the head of a Judeo-Christian congregation here in Reno. He's a resident of the county, and he has children in Washoe County schools. He's here in support of the pastor. He wants him to be reinstated. We must be tolerant of all. In speaking here about religious people as well as non-religious. We have the freedom in this country to voice opinions. We must guard those freedoms for everyone. Not only for a certain group of people. I think it's very important, and the United States Constitution defends that ideal. In our Judeo-Christian faith, we don't discriminate against anyone. We don't speak of hatred towards anyone. Even though some people interpret it as hate when we don't accept their lifestyle. We are in a very dangerous time in this country. Where people think that adhering to somebody's rights and going against other people's rights is okay. We must be tolerant of all. We all pay taxes. And we must be represented in our schools. An education must represent all our community. And respectful of all. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. If you would like a little more time, he can certainly have some.
The freedom of expression for all is a right granted to Americans. And blocking that in any way or form is very dangerous. We must take care of our freedoms. And as leaders, you have the responsibility of maintaining that order. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. And thank you for translating for him.
Josh Damon, Pastor William Lyons.
Mr. Damon, welcome.
Hello, how's it going? Thank you for letting me speak. I feel bad I'm not prepared as everyone else is. I'm just a regular citizen. I'm actually seventh generation Nevada. And we have the third generation graduating from Reno High School, so I'm a prodigy? No, that's not right. Of the Washoe County School District. And I actually have 11-year-old twins that are in the school district right now. And I think the main thing, the challenges that the committee is facing on deciding what is fair to talk about or speak about comes down to love. And I think that Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. said it best, "Darkness cannot drive out darkness; only light can do that. Hate cannot drive out hate; only love can do that." And I will say that all my dealings with Pastor Brent Brooks has been about love. And I think that it would be doing a great disservice if we do not have more committee members talking about love and coming from a place of love. If you all think it's hard to love a bunch of kids in the school district, you should try to go love some Christians. So I just am for Brent Brooks remaining on the committee, coming from a place of love. And I think that we all can learn from Brent Brooks and coming from love, and maybe we can get some things figured out and teach these kids how to love. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Damon.
Pastor William Lyons, Bishop Luther Dupree.
Pastor Lyons, welcome. Nice to see you.
Greetings, greetings. Good to be here. And thank you all for all the work that you do. And I'm here just to speak on behalf of Brent Brooks. Brent Brooks is a great guy in general, just all around. I believe he is a fair individual. He has been a leader in our community, bringing different races together, you know, the Latino, African-American, and even the Filipino. So I just believe that when I see the emails and things posted on Facebook about him, me as a preacher friend and a brother, I need to stand up and say, hey, that's not true. And so I want to stand up here publicly and say that Brent is all about loving people and bringing people together, regardless of your background, regardless of your gender, regardless of, you know, being a part of the LGBTQ community. Those things don't matter. And I think one of the other ministers said, "But we're all taught and by the word of God to love one another." And so that's what Brent stands for, in spite of our differences. And one other thing that I want to point out is, you know, we always talk about free speech until we disagree. And then when we disagree, we want the other person to shut up. And unfortunately, I believe that's what's happening here. And I just don't believe that that's what we represent in this Washoe County. And so doing that and not reappointing him would be what I call not inclusion. So we want to include everybody to come to the table and talk about these things in a fair and equal manner. And so just because you don't agree with Brent Brooks does not mean that he should not be reappointed. And so I would encourage the board to reappoint Brent Brooks. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Lyons.
Bishop Luther Dupree, then Clarence Brooks Jr.
Bishop Dupree, welcome.
Thank you, and God bless all of you. I just had surgery on my vocals.
Oh, gosh.
And not really supposed to be talking, but at a time like this, I need to talk. I'm here, and we honor all of you for the job that you do. Thank you very much for your service. But I'm here to say, just before my voice totally goes out, that I'm here in support of Brent Brooks remaining on this year, board as a representative for the religious community. In fact, we need more Brooks on the board in the day and time in which we live and all the things that are happening. And I don't hear him saying eliminate or exclude, but he's simply saying, "If you teach this, then you ought to also give the other side of it as well. So give the traditional views as well as other views." And what I'm hearing is if we, is to eliminate a man, one view, and let the other take precedent over that. And I think that would be a wrong and an insult for all of us in this day and time in which we live. And it's sad that we have to be here at a time like this discussing a subject like this. And this day and time in our life, too much are happening. People are dying in school. People are shooting. People are down, just had will because of all of these things that we talk about now. And we're talking about eliminating and getting rid of. But we need a Brooke on the board. The Bible does say righteousness exalts a nation and sin is a reproach to any people. And we are not talking about getting rid of Brent. We're really talking about eliminating what we believe God says. And God is our conviction. And it's a sad day in America when we cannot teach our conviction and what we believe and what we live. And so those of us that believe that there is a God, we believe that the Bible is his conviction. And when we teach the Bible, we're not bashing, we're not picking on people. We are just teaching our conviction of what we believe about Jesus Christ and Him crucified. And since God says that something is wrong, those of us that teach His Word have to teach what we believe God is directing us to teach. Please allow Brooke to continue to serve on SHARE. God bless your hearts.
Thank you, Bishop Dupree.
Clarence Brooks Jr.
Mr. Brooks, welcome.
Thank you. I forgot my hearing aid, so I can barely hear back there, so you're gonna have to tone it up a little bit.
All right.
My name is Clarence Brooks Jr., and I came here this evening, this afternoon. I was just gonna sit in the back and just be here for my cousins, just to support them. You see, his last name is Brooks, my name is, last name is Brooks, so I call him my cousin. He's my cousin. And he will tell you the same thing. I'm his cousin. But what I come, I just come here to say, I just couldn't sit back in the back and not say something on behalf of my cousin. I support him, and I hope that he will be retained on this staff because what Brent did for me is he stretched me and pushed me to get engaged, to get involved in the community. And I've seen him go to places where he was not welcomed, but to be a part of and to bring people together. And that's what I hope that you trustees will take into consideration, that Brent will show up where he may not be invited, but he is willing, he stands on truth, and he stands on what is right. And I pray, I hope that he will, he will be retained. I heard this, he's a bigot, and he's all this, and I'm thinking, my cousin? I mean, look at me and look at him. And so he is willing to reach out. And I just hope that you will retain him because he is willing to do that which is fair, which is right. And I lead with this, if you don't stand for something, you'll fall for anything. And he is not one of those guys. So I hope you will retain him. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. I just want to let folks know, I think we have probably, what do we have, JJ, maybe 30 more cards? Oh, only one? Oh, I see this. Oh, that's the stack of them that are done already. Okay. Okay. Yeah, oh, no, I'm not saying we're shutting it off. I just, if we had 30 more to speak, I was gonna say people could come up and say ditto or, you know, I support. But yeah, please, go ahead.
Brent Brooks?
Well, there's another gentleman too, that, if you'd like to fill out a card, yeah, right outside. Mr. Brooks, or Pastor Brooks, please. You have the floor. Welcome.
Thank you for having me today. I will start out with, I don't like being the center of attention. I have been this much the center of attention since my 60th birthday. And if you don't reappoint me, my life gets a lot easier. And if I am the person that my opponents are describing, you shouldn't reappoint me. But I don't recognize that person. I made a commitment, when I applied for this job, I made a commitment that I was here to represent the diversity of Washoe County. And I understood that there are people who do not believe as I believe. I understand that, and I'm here to represent them also. I was asked last night by a good friend, what was I feeling? Because in case you haven't noticed, there's been a concerted attack in social media and in your emails against me. And I said what I was feeling was a mix of amusement and aggravation. Amusement in that it's ironic to me that those who talk the most, talk the very most about inclusion somehow want to exclude other views. That is strange to me, that those who talk the most about bullying resort to bullying in the process. Where I'm at is where I was at when I met with you the last time. What I said was here, and I will say again very clearly, that both opinions need to be presented, that I was asking for full inclusion instead of exclusion of one set of views. And that was the way Lesson One was veering at that time, was only presenting one side, that there is a traditional view of sexuality that needs to be presented. I think our students are smart enough, wise enough, they can hear both views, and they can learn to debate and discuss those views with civility, understanding that we do differ. Just that I do differ. But I don't recognize the person that's been described as me here. I have not presented that. I have never asked that the LGBTQ view be removed. I've asked that it be balanced, and that was what this group did. You asked for it to be balanced, and that's what we're hopefully doing as we continue to meet coming up. I will accept your reappointment if you make it. If not, as I said, my life gets easier. You know, being in the public eye means people say all sorts of things about you, people make all sorts of assumptions, people sometimes distort the truth. I've learned to sympathize with you a lot greatly through this. I do hope you will reappoint me. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, can I just ask Pastor Brooks, if you wouldn't mind? I wanted you to have an opportunity to tell your side of this because we don't want to make decisions based on hearsay. And I wanted to give you the opportunity to just tell folks if there's any doubt, we do have a policy, this district has a policy of inclusiveness, and that does mean that we respect and we honor and we value everybody in our district, all 64,000 students and our 8,000 staff members. And I just, I want to ask you and give you the opportunity to say on the record, do you feel like you have any reason why you can't respect that policy of respecting everyone regardless of their race, their gender identity, their ethnicity, et cetera?
As you've seen, my friends are a diverse group, okay? I absolutely endorse that. I have no problem with that. I have made no comments before you that would say anything different. I've made no comments in the meetings that would be different. We have board members here, district people, Deborah Beersdorf, Kendra Fox, Kristin McNeil, have sat through countless meetings with me, and I think they would all verify I've never done anything different.
Okay, well, I appreciate that statement on the record, and it is very important to us that we be respectful of everybody's identity, whatever it is. And so I appreciate that commitment.
And I should say, that's not just Washoe County school district policy. That's what my beliefs teach me to, that you respect and love other human beings.
Okay, thank you, Pastor Brooks. I appreciate that. Who else is, do we have more cards?
Megan, do we have the translator still?
Oh, she's actually doing some translation for us.
Do you want me to translate?
We have someone coming. Okay.
Yeah. She's actually recording.
Okay, so are you okay if we move on and then we'll come back? Okay.
Dawn Nelson.
Dawn, welcome. Mr. Nelson?
Members of the committee, my name's Dawn Nelson. Thank you for letting me come here today. I'm a friend of Pastor Brooks, and I'm elder of one of the largest churches, mega churches in Reno and Sparks. And been going there a long time. We have thousands of people that go to our church, and many of those have kids that go to Washoe County schools. Parents and grandparents are really concerned. I don't say I represent my church, but I know there's thousands of people think like me that go to just my church alone. I think- Um, I think Pastor Brooks represents, uh, probably the widest possible, um, swath of people who are in the religious community, um, you know, being an evangelical. He has, uh, views of, um, that would be seen in the LDS and Catholics and, you know, Pentecostals and all kinds. So he just represents a huge, uh, number of people, and is very diverse. Um, and he brings, so he brings people to the table who will only feel alienated and excluded if his voice and his views that he represents are, are rejected and he is, he is silenced. What he is criticized for, you know, having a tradit- traditional view of sexuality, it has been embraced by billions and billions of people in all cultures in human history until the last twenty years. And I think, um, that that is not controversial, and it is not credible to say that such views, having a traditional view of, uh, human sexuality is homophobic or transphobic or discriminatory at all. Because until the last twenty years, this has been the view of human history, and it still isn't settled, uh, as it's being challenged now. And, um, so it is, it's not controversial, it would be shocking, um, uh, and it would be, it'd be shocking to hear that it is radical, it's non-controversial. And I, I really think we'd have to take into, uh, consideration the seriousness of our school board if we rejected someone because of those traditional views which are shared by billions of people around the world and in all of human history. So I think that would be a grave mistake, um, and it would be shocking, and in my opinion, tantamount to book burning and trying to push a whole group of people out of the public school system. You know, these people, the thousands and thousands and tens of thousands of religious people in our community believe what he does, and we can't just push them out and discriminate against them and, uh, alienate them and tell them that they have no say in what their kids are being taught in our public schools. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Mr. Munoz, welcome.
Good evening. Buenas tardes.
Good afternoon.
Gracias por su tiempo.
Thank you for giving me your time.
Sé que es valuable.
I know it's very valuable.
Antes de que se me pase, quisiera decir de que si pudiera tener un representante más como él, lo tuviera.
He says, before it passes me, I'd like to say that if I could have a representative like
Pastor.
This pastor, I would have him.
Yeah. Creo que él es una persona muy conocida y
I think he's a very well-known person.
Y que no solo representa una comunidad, uh, en específico.
And he doesn't only represent the specific community.
Somos un grupo grande que incluye latinos.
We're a large group that includes Latinos.
Afros.
African-Americans.
Y creo que necesitamos tener un representante como él.
And I think we need a representative like him.
Hacerlo a un lado o quitarlo de la mesa directiva sería un gran error.
To take him away from this table would be a major error.
Error.
See?
Yeah.
Mistake.
Y para mí, como padre
And for me, as a parent, as a father
De una pequeña hija es importante tener a alguien que me represente y que diga en lo que yo pienso.
As a father of a little girl, it's very important for me to have somebody to represent me and tell everyone what I feel.
Yeah. Y antes de que se me olvide también
And I also don't want to forget
Se dijo por dos personas anteriores que él ha tratado de quitar cierto grupo de del
Two people before me have said that he tried to take away certain groups.
Y si ponen atención a las, a reuniones anteriores, no es esa la intención.
And if you pay attention to previous, um, meetings, that wasn't the intention.
Creo que la intención de nosotros como una, como, uh, comunidad cristiana siempre ha sido no quebrar nuestras propias reglas.
Our intention as a Christian community was not to break our own rules.
Porque tenemos que amar.
We must love.
A eso hemos sido llamados.
That's our calling.
Y creo que así como respetamos un estilo de vida, también, también necesitamos que nos respeten.
And just like we respect a lifestyle, a different lifestyle, we also need them to respect us. Gracias. Thank you.
Gracias. Is he finished? Does he have anything else he wants to say?
¿Algo más? Eso.
Okay.
That's all.
Gracias. Thank you.
Sheri Fred.
Welcome, Ms. Fred.
Hello, my name is Sheri Fred, and, um, I just come before the committee, and thank you for allowing each and every person that's got a, a chance to stand up and speak their views. I've known Brent Brooks for a number of years. I've known him to be highly integrable, a man of love, and, um, I just stand in agreement with each and every person that has stood up in support of his reappointment. And I just plead with each and every one of you to, and thank you, uh, for your consideration in, um, reappointing Brent Brooks to, back to the committee. And, uh, I just thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fred.
Norris Dupree.
Mr. Dupree, welcome.
Thank you.
Dr. Dupree, I'm sorry, that's right.
Thank you, thank you, greatly appreciate it. Um, I, I just wanna start out by saying, uh, number one is that, um, I'm here, and I'm here to talk about, um, Brent Brooks. And, uh, I know he's a pastor, and I know, uh, he's a Christian, but I wanna talk about character, because I believe character is important. Number one, everybody in here discriminates. We have our own background, we have our own culture, we have our own social group, none of us is exclusive toward discriminating. So the question is, do you treat people unequal or unfair? That's the key question as we move forward, talking about Pastor Brent Brooks. Does he treat people unfair? Does he, uh, uh, is there a, a, an unfair advantage that he gives certain people? And for many of us, we really have to look at this. Uh, when I talk about Brent Brooks, the question is, does he qualify to sit on the board? Uh, to me, he's a, he's a compassionate guy, he's a guy that studies, he's a guy that, that advocates in the community, he, he's someone that loves individual. Also, for me, uh, the concern, um, for Christians especially, uh, being a loving individual, is also looking at the statistics of our brothers and sisters that are LGBTQ+. When we take a look at depression and suicide, and we take a look at bullying, and these things that happen in the school, we need people that can stand up, we need people that can befriend them, we need people, uh, that can talk to them, uh, and, and accept them for who they are. And I'm trying to tell you, if you want a passionate individual that cares about people and not about politics, then you have the right guy, Pastor Brent Brooks. So a- as we just move forward, and as we talk about an individual and quality characteristics that we want on the board, we all have our beliefs, we all have our lens that we look through, uh, we all have our implicit and explicit biases, we can't hide from that. But the question is, uh, um, do you, are you able to look at that in a reasonable fashion? And are you able to put these things in context so that you can have a shared experience? That's what inclusion is. Inclusion is really diversity of thought. And so I don't really have time to go into that. But diversity of thought is very, very important as we sit at the table and as we talk, and as we express different ideas, we can, uh, come up with these different opinions, have diversity of thoughts, and still leave out loving one another. And that is Pastor Brent Brooks. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Dupree.
That's all I have.
Okay, is there anyone else who wants to speak to us on this item before we close the public comment?
Can you just ask a question?
Not, you, you did have your three minutes, sir, so we'll, um, just wanna make it possible for anybody else who hasn't spoken. Okay. All right, well, I'll bring it back to the board. Uh, and, uh, does anybody have any questions? Any, anything that staff can add, um, or, uh, anyone who wishes to make a motion? Dr. Taylor?
Thank you, Madam President. First of all, thank you to, uh, everybody that, that took the time to reach out, to email, to call us and text us and all the things that, ways that we've all gotten information on this and to come tonight. Um, I know it makes a long meeting for us, but we really, really do appreciate, um, hearing your voices. It matters to us a lot, regardless of what side of any issue you may be on. Um, it's helpful for us, and so I certainly want to, um, want to thank you. Um, I have, I took some notes here, I wanna go, before I get into the, just the appointment, I wanna go back and clarify a little something. On the curriculum, let me make it very, very clear, Lesson One was not rejected by the Board. I'm gonna say that again. Lesson One was not rejected by the Board. I know that was widely reported and, um, widely assumed that was not the case. Lesson One did not come with the recommendation from the committee, and so the Board asked, because the vote was four of four. So we sent it back and asked that they do some work on it and come back, and hopefully it comes back to us with a recommendation. Um, so please know, don't think at all that the Board has indicated, uh, a preference or, uh, a bias, or whatever the case may be, because Lesson One was rejected, it was not rejected. And, and the, the full intent is, once the committee begins to meet again, that they take this up right away, and that they still have an opportunity to be included into, um, into the curriculum this year. So please know that to be fact. It was not rejected by the Board. I don't think any of us would want it to reject, and just speak for myself. Um, so let me just get that out of the way. Um, and now, and now, let, let me speak personally. Um, I could not and would not appoint anyone to any board committee or position who demonstrates hate, um, the lack of respect, the lack of acknowledgement, um, to frankly, friends, colleagues, or family members of mine. Personally, I could not do that. Yeah, all of us in this room, we're honest with ourselves, of people that we love, people that we, uh, respect, people that we perhaps live with or work with, that are members of the LGBTQIA+ community. Um, so I could not and would not do that because morally that would be wrong for me. Um, as a person of faith, I am one who believes it is critically important that we do not treat people differently based upon how they identify, based upon how they look, how they live, or how they love. I could never support that. And so, there's so much information, I know that's out there, that many have, have seemed to believe about, about, uh, Brent Brooks. Um, and I understand all the information we got tonight, I can just talk about my own personal experience with Brent Brooks. I have not had a lot of experience with him, um, but I have had some. And the, the way he coined it, I must say, is pretty, is pretty accurate. The person often tonight, that in some of the emails that we received, that I, that was described as Brent Brooks, that's not the Brent Brooks that I know. I just have to be honest. Other people are talking about what they heard, other people are talking about what they think they read, or what they think they heard or what they read, or whatever. I can just talk about what I know. And what I know is that that is not Pastor Brent Brooks. Pastor Brent, um, has been nothing but open, on this particular issue, nothing but open, um, nothing but willing to say, you know, I understand that there are other views that need to be a part of this conversation. Let me take you back a couple of years ago, when the Share Committee first began the difficult work of, uh, looking at new curriculum. There were many people that didn't want any changes to the curriculum. There were many people, friends, colleagues, someone of mine, in the faith community in particular, that didn't want there to be any change, any inclusion of any, anything, um, from the LGBTQIA+ community. And Pastor Brent is not one of those. I can tell you that. You know why I know? Because I asked him. Because when you get a lot of information coming to someone, the best thing in the world to do is to ask them. Um, it's a new thing, some people should try it, it works, it's a thing. It's a thing. Um, I asked him when this first began to happen, tell me where you stand. That's why I'm glad President Simon Holland asked him again here. I asked him. Um, and of all the things you, people can say about Brent Brooks, can I be said that he's a dishonest man? And so that's not, then again, my experience, that's not what he's expressed to me, here of late, I've had, as I've asked these questions, 'cause it's important. I could not appoint anybody to a board committee that is not going to respect and keep safe. There is nothing more important than the safety of our students and of our staff. Absolutely nothing. And I could not appoint anyone that would not be aligned with that. So that being said, based upon my own personal experience and what I do believe about Pastor Brent Brooks, is I move that Pastor Brent and the other, uh, I don't know if we should take them together separately? Take them, take them together since it's one agenda item? Okay. Uh, I move that the Board accept the members, um, the new members and returning members of the Share Committee as presented, uh, in the agenda item.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor. Is there a second? And then we'll have discussion second by Ms. Manetto, trustee Manetto. Um, is there, are there other comments? I, I do, I do wanna add one thing, I was remiss, I received a text from Assemblywoman Jill Tolles, and asked that she, uh, she asked if, uh, I would, uh, share that she fully supports keeping Brent Brooks, uh, knows him to be a very thoughtful individual, and believe a diversity of voices at the table is important to provide balance and credibility to the decision-making process on important topics like sexual health and education. So my apologies for not mentioning that sooner. We have a motion and a second. Sir, other discussion? Anyone else wanna make comment? Okay. Vice President Raymond.
Thank you, and I'd just like to thank Pastor Book, Brooks for his service on the committee. I think all sides of this debate and, um, you know, the issues at hand today and in the past, um, you all have faced a lot of criticism, again, from both sides, and I know it's a very tough job, and I appreciate your time and service on the committee. Um, and I think, for me, you know, where I kind of keep going back to is that, in this case, this is about religion. The, uh, position for the committee is deemed by the Nevada revised statute to be a member of the religious community. And so it's not about Lesson One, it's not about any other thing, it's about the seat and question. And I would just say that regardless of the outcome of the decision today, um, the feedback that we received in email and, um, and calls and conversations that stood out the most for me was from other members of the religious community, from the Episcopal Church, the Lutheran Church, the Methodist Church, the Unitarian Church, that, that had some concerns. And, um, whether they're founded or not, or based on fact or not, I think there is an opportunity for some outreach there, maybe to help, you know, individuals that maybe don't understand the position you take as the religious representative on the committee, um, so that they do understand, you know, the truth of what you've shared with us today. Because I, I do take you at your word, um, and I don't know whether, you know, we would agree or not agree on certain issues, but I think you have been appointed to represent the religious perspective, and, um, and to me, um, that means, that's a tough job. I mean, that means trying to make a lot of people happy that don't agree on a lot of things, but I would just, again, regardless of the decision, make sure that there maybe is some outreach done to make sure the, those in the religious community do understand you and your beliefs so that, um, they feel that the, the seat held by the religious, you know, member, um, whether it represents their personal beliefs or not, is representative of the religious community in Washoe County, so.
Does anyone else wish to say anything? Well, I, I appreciate, uh, the difficult work that the Share Committee does, and I, we've, there's been a lot of focus on Pastor Brooks tonight. I just, um, like others, want to acknowledge all of the members of the Share Advisory Committee who do, uh, really difficult work for us. I appreciate Pastor Brooks, your statement here, that, um, there is nothing that will prevent you from, uh, promoting acceptance of our students and their gender expression and their gender identity, even if their gender expression and their gender identity, even if that's not your belief. I appreciate, uh, that you have been a supporter of having that content, uh, in, uh, the, in this, the lesson one curriculum. And I also want to say, as one board member, uh, I don't think this board would ever support curriculum that didn't include a traditional view of human sexuality. That would not be fully informative. Um, if we say that it's the only way, that would be exclusive. But we are saying that is part of what people express their sexuality as, as is other gender expression that is non-traditional. And I think that's what we're striving for, is to be inclusive of gender expression that is traditional, gender expression that is non-traditional, and to honor and respect and validate, um, our wonderful 64,000 students and their choices that they have to make, um, about their own lives and about their own identity. So I appreciate your, your support for that. Um, and I, I know this is difficult work. Does anyone else have a comment to make? And again, um, as Vice President Raymond said, this is by statute, uh, a seat that goes to a, a, uh, person who is part of the religious community, and yes, almost impossible to be representative of everyone's religious views. Um, so what we strive to do with our curriculum is to not have it be religious, but to be informative, and to be based on what we know, uh, to be factual, and to honor and respect, uh, the facts about, uh, gender expression and sexual orientation among our children. Okay, are we ready for a vote? Okay. Uh, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay. We have unanimously approved the, uh, appointments and reappointments to the shared advisory committee. And I think we will now, uh, take a 15-minute break. We've been sitting quite a while, and we want to give full attention to the next items on the agenda. Okay, we're going to try to, uh, try to come back to order. And, uh, our next, uh, item on the agenda is the presentation discussion on the Safe Routes to School program as related to walk zone extensions enacted for the 2018-2019 school year. MJ Cloud is back, Celeste Arnold, and Rick Martin. And MJ, I understand you have had a knee injury and have to have surgery?
I have a torn ACL.
Ah, ow.
It used to be here, but it, that's fine.
Oh, well, we-
I can still do my job.
Well, we appreciate you being here, because I know that must be extremely painful, so. Okay, well, the floor is yours.
Well, thank you for having us. Uh, President Holland, Interim Superintendent McNeil, Vice President Raymond, distinguished members of the board. We are here to present tonight, uh, for the, uh, safety and walk zone transportation aspects for our students. And, uh, obviously the presentation will be with, uh, our Safe Routes to School Officer MJ Cloud, and Celeste Arnold, who is the Transportation Systems and Logistics Manager. And I am just here as I candy, but anyway.
We were going to say it if you did, Rick, so.
I'm here, I'm here to present and help with the presentation as well. So, uh, we will be breaking that presentation up. Uh, I'll handle part of it, uh, the more dry facts, and then MJ will obviously dazzle you with her presentation from there. So, uh, we'll go ahead and get going here, and we'll move through this quickly. You gave us 25 minutes. We're going to take two. So, uh, so back in, uh, back in 2005, Trucking Meadows Regional Planning Agency put a team together to talk about safe routes to school. That included the county, City of Reno, City of Sparks, all of that, uh, and a number of different entities, including the Washoe County School District and, uh, the Regional Transportation Commission. So, uh, they went through this, and it was done based on Assembly Bill 231. Uh, and part of that was due to the fact that travel, uh, travel to schools by walking, by bikes, and like, had decreased, uh, by quite a bit. So there was a lot of congestion around the schools with cars, things like that. So, uh, they decided to reverse that trend. Please, next one? Okay. Um, so how that worked was, uh, from the standpoint of our transportation, uh, field safety supervisors got involved with the annual assessments based on information provided by the commission. And there's a whole list of, uh, resources they use there, including the Americans with Disabilities Act, which obviously is a, a major component of any safe aspect of being able to make sure that, uh, any disabled person can get, uh, one place to another safely on any walking path or crossing areas. So, uh, a big component for that. Um, needs determined for safety, um, all of them are there. Uh, walking paths, crosswalks with pedestrian stops, uh, safe crossing paths by or in front of the schools. And again, I'm not going to go through each of those, because you're all, uh, you've all reviewed it as, as a whole. And then, um, the resources, uh, resources we've used, um, is doing the assessments of the walk zones, uh, using the most current information, including housing developments. And we've, we use the city and county maps quite a bit for that aspect, because it is the most recent, uh, and up-to-date information on walking paths, on, uh, uh, crosswalks, on lights, all of that, as opposed to Google. Um, so again, just continuing on, these were, uh, identified and updated in our routing system with the city and county maps. And then, uh, we consider these, based on those aspects with the city and county, that consider those safe paths, we move forward from there. Uh, wow, you are moving. So.
Can I ask a question about that, Rick?
Yeah, yeah.
I, I know that, uh, sometimes, um, I get emails from parents, because in the wintertime, that safe pedestrian path is not a safe pedestrian path, because it's covered in snow, and it's not, you know, and hasn't been cleared.
Correct. And then there are some aspects of that, that we do try to, and we take those into consideration when we're working with them and the likes. Like, some of the more, um, say, more, uh, rural areas that have the walking paths, but as you said, they're in fields and like, or even in county areas where they're not getting the paths cleared as quickly and the like. So-
Yeah.
We do try to take that into consideration.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So, move forward there. Uh, so then we continue with our walk zone data. We have a walk zone committee, uh, that does the data ring, uh, data gathering. Obviously, we work with MJ here for the safe routes to school. And we are look, each of those zones is looked at individually, uh, by the members of the Systems and Logistics Division. Each map is developed as a PDF and printed to be viewed by the Systems and Logistics Division. And then we, uh, we review it with the Walk Zone Committee for Safety and Access. So there's a lot of variables and a lot of hands, uh, and different eyes, sets of eyes looking at this, so that when we're developing them.
And just for the public record, I know that you and your team often will go out and walk those paths yourself, and I appreciate-
Are you referring to the last email I sent you there?
[laughing]
Yes, yes, we do. It was a, a very nice day, and it was a beautiful walk. But yeah, we do do-
I, I want the public to know that you guys actually, you're not just looking at a map. You actually go out and-
Yeah, we go and walk them.
-individually, and walk it, and take pictures, and-
Yeah, yeah.
I really appreciate that level of dedication. I know, I'm sure we all do.
I know MJ does that as well.
Yeah. And so from that standpoint, obviously, it's just to give us a, a better understanding, because sometimes, if you're just going based on, uh, what the public is inferring, um, you know, there, there probably is some concerns there. So we have to make sure that that's something that is valid or not valid, and go from there. So, um, then obviously, we work with the, the mapping systems. The transportation view is the one that's on the lower quadrant. Uh, the Google view of the maps is up on the upper level, which we get a lot of people who in, infer that Google Maps is accurate, and in many ways it is. But unfortunately, it's usually six to, um, six months to a year behind in accuracy, so it doesn't have the developments and like. That's, again, why we use the city and county maps, from that standpoint. Uh, and then I will turn this over.
Do you want me to click, or you can just click quickly?
Whatever you want.
Um, Safe Routes to School, he already gave you the history. So, you're just going to see some stats that are showing what the barriers were, what parents, um, considered barriers. And, you can just keep clicking. And the, the perception that the weather, the inclement weather, that students don't want to go out in it, this perception and the reality are two different things. The getting from the house to the school is actually safer than the, than the block or the, the very front of the school where you have all of the vehicles crammed in. Um, you have less vehicles in the actual walk from the house to the school than you do within that zone, because it's the chicken and the egg. Parents are saying, "It's not safe. Get in the car. I'll drive you." And the actual reality is, as you can see, the stats up there, uh, the chance of death in a motor vehicle is one in 84, whereas the chance, when you're on a, in a, on a bicycle in a collision, is one in 4,000, almost 5,000. So it is safer statistically to be walking and biking, as long as we can get parents not to have their vehicles in the school zone. We don't want to, um, send and encourage all these students to bike and walk without giving them the tools to do it safely. So doing assemblies, having events, um, that's what helps us make sure the students, the staff, the parents, the community, doing news interviews, getting the messages out there, and getting the education out there, is one of the pivotal things that's going to make a difference in a child getting to and from school safely. A walking school bus is, it's exactly as, as it's explained, of all of the complaints that have been coming in, and we've been fielding and working through. I'll hear parents say, "Well, me and my neighbors are unhappy with the walking zone, or the extension, or where my child has to walk," yet their child is still walking alone. So I try to put it back on the community and remind them that if you and your neighbors are unhappy, then your children can walk together, form a walking school bus, wait for other students at the corner if you see somebody else walking. It may be uncomfortable, but that's how we get back to having a healthy child arrive at school safely and ready to learn. So again, integrating the education and the, into traditional subjects, it's already been proven, um, through studies, as in you and I did one last year, showing that students who bike and walk to school, they test better, they are ready, they're able to use their environment, and apply it to different things like your science, your language arts, your geography. And teachers can then reference their walk to school and be able to, um, implement that into their curriculum. So encouragement, I'm super excited. And I, again, like you said, going out and walking and taking pictures is a big part. This is the, the skateboard racks. They were bought with a grant, and they were implemented, and now the new schools have at least triple that amount of skateboard racks. The new schools also had safe routes to school in on their planning. And we were able to decide where the best strategic area to put the bike, um, fenced-in area would be. Those biked fenced-in areas have tripled. So we're really happy about all of those. And it's just continuing to encourage kids to bike and walk. And we want to give them the area to do it the right way. This is another grant, doubling the sidewalk in front of Catherine Dunn is only one example. These improvement projects where, um, pedestrian activated flashers and sidewalking were put in at the new schools. And if you have any questions, or complaints, or concerns, I will be happy to be able to find where the decision came from, and why the decision was made in that manner. But there are so many improvement projects that have been done, that I would take all night to highlight them.
Okay. Um, thank you. Board member questions? I, I think, Dr. Taylor, you were the one that had asked for this to be on the agenda some time ago, so I'd let you lead off if you want to.
No, thank you, Madam President. And thank you, thank you, MJ. I mean, she went out right away. There was a particular area that, that, um, a family was asking about, and she went out and took pictures, and, and really sent back some really valuable information to shed some light, because part, as you said, Rick, sometimes it's, um, it's, it's a little bit more to it as you look at it more, and so on. And I also want to thank both of you, because you're very responsive when questions do come up, and people do want to know the whys. And, "Hey, can we look at this a little bit?" I mean, that makes a, uh, it helps, it's helpful for me, and I'm sure for my colleagues, when you tell someone, "Hey, look," you know, they'll, they'll look at some instances, um, on an individual basis, and see if there's something that can be done, or that should be done, to make sure that, um, that, that, you know, kids are safe. And, and I think when we can tell people that, at least they know, hey, you're going, doesn't mean it, doesn't always go their way, right? But at least we know the why, you know, that we can share. And you're great at providing that when there's that email, and you give that back. Or at least to say, "Hey, we're turning it over to the transportation, contact Rick Martin," and then you can share with them. That's very, very helpful. Especially a time like now, when the new school year starts, and so this comes more to the forefront.
That is true. And, uh, thank you for all those you forwarded to me this year. Appreciate that.
Not a problem.
No, it's been, it's been good. And, and we are more than willing to ta, take that opportunity to, uh, bring a solution to the table, as opposed to, um, saying no. You know, as, as, uh, I was just talking out front earlier, this is our opportunity week. So, you know, it's an opportunity for solutions for us, you know, in, in this aspect. And uh, as, uh, as many opportunities as we have, we've actually come up with some very good solutions over the time.
Yes, you have.
So it's been a good thing for us. So, uh, so from that standpoint, we do look at it that way. So we, we, uh, thank you for the opportunities that we do get from you, and we look forward to dealing with the community in that respect, so.
That's great. Trustee Calvert?
Yes. I just have a couple of questions. Do you provide kids with helmets when they go to school, or is that something that's left up to the parent?
For-
I do. Safe routes to school, absolutely. Uh, not only do we go in to do the assemblies and teach, also on the news, teaching the proper way to fit a helmet.
Okay.
I always will tell the principals, if you have a student that wants one, to please contact me, because I have grants that I've written, and I have helmets available.
Now, my second question. Do you partner with Kiwanis or anyone as far as bikes, if kids need a bike and they want to ride to school?
Yes, ma'am. Um, Trucking Meadows Bike Alliance has the Reno Bike Project, Kiwanis, myself, N.DOT, um, RTC, where it's a combined effort. And when a bicycle has been stolen, or there's a new student, and, you know, they, they would like a bike, or something had happened to them, then yes, those, Kiwanis, they present the, the new bikes.
Thank you.
That's great. Vice President Raymond?
Thank you. Well, thank you. Um, I think we're doing such great work in this area that, um, it does include a lot of community partners. So I appreciate your recognizing those that help us, because I think one area I've noticed some confusion is sort of where our, uh, jurisdiction ends, and where the cities and the counties take over. And, um, so I really appreciate the flashing signal numbers, because I get probably almost a weekly call or email about how to, who to complain to about the lights not being on in their school zone. Um, but I also give a plug to the City of Reno. I'm sure Sparks is just as responsive, but in fact, just today, I had to make a claim, I guess, on their website. Um, my daughter walks to and from school every day, and the shrubs had-
Mm-hmm.
-overgrown on some of the sidewalks on her route, which was causing her to step into Plum Lane, which is not safe. Um, but the city's always very responsive, and I would just encourage parents, um, to advocate to, for their kids if they know that there's any obstruction on the walk. Um, you know, of course, the district wants to do anything that they can, but, um, there are just some areas that aren't under our jurisdiction. We can't tell a homeowner to cut the shrubs on their side, the sidewalk, but the city can, and they do.
Exactly. Yes, they do.
I've had good luck with it in the past.
They do.
And I also, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I was only going to, going to provide, not only will the city contact that homeowner, if it's not done in a timely manner, then they will come and do it. And-
It doesn't look as pretty when they do it. I've seen it.
Exactly.
It doesn't?
Not as pretty. But I'll also give a plug. My daughter goes to Jessie Beck, and they have the walking school bus. And, um, so I'd encourage any other schools, um, to reach out to Jessie Beck. I think, um, they have done a great job with it. It's, it's used by many students and families, and works really well for that school. And so I think it's a great idea.
That's great.
The back-to-school nights are the perfect opportunity for school to take responsibility and ownership of a walking school bus. Um, Dr. Frank does have a sign-up that we're encouraging some of those neighborhoods where you're volunteering your name and your phone number to say, "Contact me if you'd like to have our students walk together." So for the back-to-school nights, that's the perfect opportunity for a school and the, um, the PTA or the PTO to take ownership of that sort of program.
That's great. Interim Superintendent Neal?
Well, I just want to thank MJ and, and Rick Martin, and his entire team. And MJ, um, this is what we call the definition of a cross-functional team. And it's really important that you all work very close together, and you communicate on a regular basis. Um, I love the fact that you were very proactive with our three new schools. I know that you went out there several times, um, and me- I know that you went out there several times in meeting with our principals and I just really appreciate that. So thank you.
Trustee Kelly.
Thank you, Madam President. I really appreciate the fact that you differentiated between the walk and the bike ride to school and then once you're at school, the different challenges and dangers that students face when they're going through the parking lot to school. I mean, that's, that's such an important distinction. And since the more dangerous part is when they're almost at school, it just reminds me of how important our staff is that put on the vest and go out there in direct traffic because they know their school and their parking lot really well and they get used to the flows of where the cars are coming and the bikes and the students are walking. And anything that we can do to help our staff, you know, make sure they have the proper equipment, the vest, all the things that they need to handle that last part, I think is really important and I know that you guys are always looking at that. So if there's anything, anything that the board can do to make sure that they have all the stuff they need, that, let us know because we'd certainly like to help. And I think the other thing I wanted to mention was that I think it's really important too that you guys are continuously talking to the students and letting them know that, you know, we've done a lot of work and we've walked the areas and this is what we've identified as the safer routes. Because from, from what I've seen with students is they love to cut corners. You know, they like to walk through yards and hop over fences and if they see a little trail or just something that they can use to shave off a little bit of time or distance, they'll do it. And it's those areas that I think are critically dangerous because if you cross a yard, you might get attacked by a dog. If you're hopping a fence, you can get cut or even worse, you know, there's beehives and all sorts of crazy things that are out there. So just keeping and letting students know that, you know, cutting corners and paths can be dangerous, but these zones that we've identified are the safest for all these different reasons and using school assemblies to do that, I think is really important. I know when I was a kid, I used to cut corners all the time and then one time I.
When you were a kid?
I always remember I hit a beehive and I got attacked by bees because I was going through brushy areas. So just keep letting students know that stick to the sidewalks and the paths because they're the safest and I think that they'll follow your lead most of the time.
To follow up with that, I want to make sure that the community isn't believing that staff are directing traffic. The, their body being in the crosswalk, it's the law that's actually directing the traffic to stop. So when you have any staff members or parent volunteers who are hesitant to help out with the Safety Patrol, having them understand and know that it's not you that is directing traffic, it's the law that says a vehicle will stop when there's a pedestrian in the crosswalk. That's super important. And also the routes that they take, I'm glad you pointed out the taking shortcuts. The inclement weather question, it's, it's important for us to remember, it's not just the snow as we saw last spring with the rain. The students were unable to get from point A to point B and the school district stepped in amazingly. Specifically, Ms. Dominguez at Jerry Whitehead, we couldn't get the students across the greenbelt. And so we stopped traffic completely and she was able to call Transportation and we stood out there and had a bus.
Wow.
Wait, we collected all of the students. All the bus did was drive them two blocks. However, the bus was able to get through that water safely and then we went on. But it's, I saw a video and I took video myself while I was out there of different students jumping fences to get away from the water. It was pretty insane, but if they could have faith in the school district and that we're going to come up with an answer for them to get to and from school safely, even if the inclement weather isn't just snow or ice and it would be rain as well.
That's great. Just another example of how responsive you are and I so appreciate that bias towards problem solving. You know, this is, this is an idea, this is a challenge, it's a, it's an opportunity and let's, let's figure it out and you guys always do and are very flexible too. And sometimes it's not only having the attitude of wanting to find a solution, but it's being willing to say, you're right, that, that is a good solution, we could do that. So thank you so much and we really appreciate it. Any other questions, comments? Trustee Cottle.
Yeah, thank you. Do you help advise the cities and the county on where to put the flashing yellow lights or any kind of marker for, for traffic if you see there's a problem? Do you kind of help do that?
I do.
You do?
Safe routes to school has a committee. So when I say we, it definitely is we. I have the traffic engineers from Washoe County, Sparks and Reno and they come to my meetings as well as R.T.C., as well as N.Safe Kids, Renown, they're all on, on the committee. So although I'm driving the bus, it's all of them and will make those decisions. Oftentimes I'll meet with the traffic engineers on site and we'll walk and talk about signage, lighting, what improvements can be done.
So I go past O'Brien instead every day and I know that that traffic light that stops traffic, it's not just a flashing yellow lights, it's an actual traffic light. So when it turns red, your drivers stop. Because I mean, if you get caught going through that, you didn't just blow a crosswalk, you went through a red light. Are there any other places where we can potentially get more of those? I know I'm thinking about Reed because the yellow flashing lights are sometimes, some drivers look at those as a suggestion. I don't see anybody, so I'm going to keep going, but yet you have an eight-year-old who hit the button and they're small and they're behind a bush, now they're going to start walking versus a traffic light turning red, cars are going to stop regardless if you see someone or not because it's a red light. So is there any, any, any hope of getting maybe more of those? Because I know, I see the effect, the positive impact of traffic actually coming to a stop on a red light so kids and parents are crossing Sted Boulevard.
Right. And I agree with you, if there's a specific area where your community or somebody has reached out to you and said, can we have this at that area? That's when we do an audit and the engineers will come out. They have a different view on things. For example, a red light, what is it going to do to the traffic and how many accidents may it cause if it's too close to another light? There are things that they'll be able to explain to me when I'm saying, we need this. So I'm able to at least have that answer as to why it is or why it can't be put there. Crosswalks on a curve, many a times the engineers will explain to me, it's not safe to put a crosswalk there, you're giving the pedestrian a false sense of security. So when I come back with an answer that says, I'm sorry, a crosswalk won't be put on that street, the reason is it's safer for that person to continue walking until the curve is gone down to the next intersection. So if there are any, any areas of concern where you have that suggestion, I'll absolutely bring it back to my committee, do an audit, find out what the answer is.
So in that area, it's kind of a unique area with the school zone wraps around the block on Silver Lake where you can't see O'Brien instead. So many times cars are not obeying the school zone because you don't see a school, there's no yellow flashing lights on that road. So unless Reno PD's out there, which they're out there a lot, but unless they're there, cars are flying down that road and then there's a crosswalk right there that has yellow flashers that gets the kids across the street so they can walk behind Sted Elementary. That's a very dangerous place for kids because most cars aren't thinking about the school zone, they're off of Sted Boulevard, they don't see the school anymore and they get up 35, 40 miles an hour when they're supposed to be doing 15. And small, small kids, because an elementary school right there are crossing that street with that false insecurity, I press the button, we're in a school zone and they just start going. And I've seen some pretty close calls in that area. So I know Reno PD is really out there in force, a lot of tickets are written in that area, especially now of school starting. So that, that's a, that's an area of concern since it's a school zone without a school in sight and no lights. So you don't really think about it until you get on Sted Boulevard.
I will come back to education on that. The news interviews that are done and the education, the assemblies in the schools that are reminding pedestrians before you step off to make that eye contact with a driver. And it goes back to drivers behaving badly. The environment may be very safe, but if you have drivers that are behaving badly, we can't control them, but we can control our own actions as a pedestrian or a bicyclist. So getting the education out during assemblies or during news interviews, that's the best way to bring awareness to drivers and pedestrian, that it's both of your responsibility, unfortunately. But it is both responsibility when you're going to enter a street.
Well, again, thank you all so much and thank you to the whole team that works on this. It is great to hear those statistics about how walking to school helps children and I think that's really, really impressive because we are bombarded with messages that it's not safe. And I really appreciate the work that you all are doing to, to get our kids to school safely, however they get there, but really to make the kids aware too of what they can do. So thank you so much for all that work. We appreciate it.
Thank you for all you do.
Okay. Good luck with your surgery, MJ.
Thanks.
Next up, Jen Van Tress and Mark Mathers and Matt Birrock and David Friedman. Presentation, oh, and Dr. Parks is back. Presentation, possible action to approve the Washoe County School District's local plan for fiscal year 2020 pertaining to the assurances required by Part B of the Federal Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, IDEA. As found in Public Law 108-446, all assurances meet with the state's plan, Nevada revised statutes, Nevada Administrative Code, and assure a child with disabilities receives a free, appropriate public education. Dr. Parks.
Good evening, President Simon Holland, members of the board, interim superintendent, Dr. McNeil. Yes, this next item, from the Office of School Leadership, we have our local expert regarding IDEA in the local plan and that is our newest member of the Office of School Leadership, Jen Van Tress. And Mr. Mathers, as you know, the expert on the financial side, they will be presenting to you our local plan. And we also have our executive directors, Mr. Friedman and Mr. Birrock, available in case there's any questions. So I'll let Mrs. Van Tress lead the way.
All right.
Thank you, Dr. Parks. Good evening. I'm Jennifer Van Tress and would you. Oh, thank you. Oh, I have to turn it on? Nobody told me that. You guys, come on, the rookie move. Thank you for this time this evening. I am Jennifer Van Tress, I'm the new area superintendent working with Special Education Department under the Office of School Leadership. Just want to quickly give you an overview, oh, let's see. An overview of the history of IDEA and what it means and then we'll talk a little bit about the local plan and then where the funding comes from and how we as the district spend the money. So IDEA originally comes from the Rehabilitation Act of 1973. That is when the federal government originally said that children with disabilities or people with disabilities are guaranteed civil rights, guaranteed civil rights to all disabled people and required accommodations. Civil rights are different than educational rights. And so from there, the law was, went into the Education for All Handicapped Children Act and that was enacted from 1975 to 1990. The difference during that time was that there were over 1 million children with disabilities who actually were denied appropriate access to public education. Many children were actually denied entry into public schools altogether, others were placed into segregated classrooms or in regular classrooms without adequate support. So after 1990, the United States Congress reauthorized this into the IDEA or Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. This act makes it available for a free and appropriate public education, which we call FAP. So if you hear the term FAP, or if you're in Texas, they call it FAP. So, but it is FAP and this ensures that all stu-, all special education or all eligible children with disabilities have access to special education and related services.
It's ironic and just amazing to me that it was only in 1990 that.
Right. Phew, it's not that long ago. How many kids were lost?
Oh, man. Yeah. Yeah.
Exactly. So IDEA, there are four basic parts of the law. Part one, or Part A actually outlines the definitions and it actually created the Office of Special Education Programs, which is responsible for administering and carrying out the terms of IDEA. Part B actually lays out the educational guidelines for schoolchildren from ages three to 21, which is what Washoe County School District was responsible for. IDEA provides financial support for state and local districts and there are six main components under Part B that we are required to follow. One is that every child is guaranteed, entitled to FAP, Free and Public, Free and Appropriate Public Education, without charge. They also, there are requirements under FAP, including that they have been identified and that they are provided with an IEP, which is an individualized education plan for the student and that they meet certain standards. We also want, the second area, or the second main principle is that they are guaranteed eligibility. This means that if, once a school professional believes that there is a child with a disability or may have a disability, we are immediately obligated to complete an evaluation at that time. So the second, that a teacher, a principal, a parent comes to the school and says, I feel like my child has a, may have a learning problem, we are immediately obligated at that time to start the evaluation process. At that time, if the child is determined to have and be eligible for services, then at that time, the school is required to write the individualized education plan. That plan defines out the student's current, current levels, so their present levels of performance, we write out their goals and objectives, we talk about what their specially designed instruction is. So what exactly is the special education program doing that is different than what happens in a general education class? We also talk about accommodations and modifications that will help support the child be successful in the general education setting. We also are required to provide a continuum of services, which means that a child can be served from the least restrictive environment, so in a general education classroom with accommodations and supports and maybe some support from a special education resource teacher, all the way through to our programs that would include PCOLO. So in between a resource program with least restrictive, all the way to a segregated school setting like PCOLO, we have the continuum. So this could be pullout services with the resource teachers, it could be a more self-contained program such as our social intervention programs, our strategies programs, our CLS programs, those provide the continuum.
CLS, Comprehensive Life Skills?
Sorry, Comprehensive Life Skills, thank you. You have to jargon bust me sometimes, I get on my kicks. So we do provide the continuum of services. Another major component is that the parents and the child themselves have the opportunity to have input into what, into that IEP. So that is a major component. The parents, this is their child, they need to have that input and give the team their knowledge about how to help make the child successful in a school environment. And lastly, on the Part B, the big, other big component is that if they disagree with the child's IEP for any reasons, that there is a process for the parents to challenge that IEP, which typically we know is what's called a due process. And so during that time, we, we as the school district work with the parents to come to a resolution on how to best provide the services for the, for the child. Those are the six main components of Part B and that is what Washoe County School District, that's our, that's our big, that's our big part, is Part B. Part C actually focuses on zero, zero to three, that we actually, when, when the child turns three, they become our responsibility, but from zero to two years, 11 months and 30 days, they actually fall under the, an early childhood system. And during that time, those families receive what's called a family, an individualized family service plan as opposed to an IEP. They get the IFSP and Part C lays out that information. Then Part D actually describes the national activities to improve the education for the students. So those are where your grants would be listed and those information, that information comes from there. So as far as IDEA for the school, uh, school district, as Part B, it does outline the contributions. When IDEA was passed, it was originally planned that the federal government would fund 40% of the average pupil expenditure. As of right now, the federal government makes less than 15%. So it's going back to 1990 and we're still only at 15%. So, it's going back to 1990, and we're still only at 15%. So, that, the rest of that money has to be picked up by school districts themselves to provide these services. So, what we do as a school district is we create what's called a local plan. This local plan has a couple, there are different parts. The first part is the assurances, and there's about 19 assurances that we, as Washoe County School District, or as the LEA, which is the Local Education Agency, we are responsible for. And there's 19 of these, but basically, they summarize exactly what we talked about in Part B. So, it is that we're requiring, that we are making sure that we are providing FAP, that we are developing and implementing IEPs, that we are providing services in the least restrictive environment, and that we are providing early childhood programs. So, the preschool programs, which is ages three to age five, before they hit that kindergarten age, that we are also providing those services for families. The next portion is the budget expenditure summary, which basically talks about how we are breaking out our budget, where the money is going, and the cost, what that cost all break down. Right now, for the fiscal year 2020, we are expecting to receive $10,421,965 for our Part B. We use that money for staff, instructional supplies, textbooks, programs, educational consultants, pass-through funds for charter schools, and then our early intervention So, we also receive an additional $234,812 in early childhood funds. That money is spent mostly on staff, including teacher assistants and teacher aides, but that amount of money still does not cover all of the costs for early childhood.
Thanks, Jen. I'll kind of carry the ball here a little bit. So, when we talk, continuing the discussion about funding of special education services, what we think about is kind of a funding waterfall, and where we are trying to maximize and use to the maximum extent possible federal funds. So, we'll first use those IDEA funds in spending our money, then we'll dip down into the next bucket, which is Medicaid. And these are medically required services for eligible families who have an IEP. We expect to receive a little bit over $3 million in fiscal year 20. Some of the gentlemen in the audience here have been working with the state to actually expand the services that we can bill Medicaid for. Currently, we really only get reimbursed Medicaid dollars for occupational therapy, physical therapy, some nursing costs, and speech services. And so, we're looking to expand that, but I don't want to jinx it too much by talking too much about that. But again, so we start with IDEA, then we spend our Medicaid dollars. Next, we spend state dollars, and here's a formula about how the state determines how much we get. Kind of the interesting part about this is this formula will go away in two years with the new funding formula that the legislature adopted. If the state increases funding to fully fund that new pupil-centered funding plan, you will see, first, then go to kind of a weighted formula system, and you would see the weight basically double for special education funding. But again, that's all contingent upon the state finding the money to do that. And then lastly, after we spend federal dollars, then state dollars, we'll spend our local dollars. And so, this is the biggest part of special education funding. It comes from us. In fiscal year 20, our budget has set aside forty, a little over $45 million of general fund dollars to contribute to cover the costs of special education services. So, basically, everything we couldn't pay through IDEA funds, Medicaid funds, or state dollars would be picked up by the general fund.
Question. Do we know how many kids we have in special education certified, like last year, for example?
Nine thousand students.
Yeah, ninety-one hundred.
Nine thousand.
We're at 13.6%, which the average is 13%. We're a little bit over.
Okay. Thank you.
And so, this chart basically provides a quick little basic breakdown of, again, our funding sources. In total, we spend $91 million per year in special education services, and so you can see how that breaks out. IDEA is a little under $11 million, the Medicaid is $3 million. We receive, you know, roughly $32 million from the state. That's the distributive school account. And then again, the district share is over $45 million or over 40%. So, it is, we have a funding issue for special education. This is the way it has worked federally in terms of the lack of IDEA funding, and certainly in Nevada. You know, we are not receiving nearly as much as we would need, and so we've had to use the general fund to support this important function. And then the last chart basically shows you over time what that's looked like, and this breaks that, just the state versus the general fund portion. And as you can see, you know, the last five years, total general fund support has gone from roughly $30 million to now $45 million. So, it's been a significant commitment by the district to special education services, but that carries a tremendous cost, which I think you all know.
Trustee Cottle, did you want to say?
I just want to make sure you understand what you were saying about the new funding formula. So, the hope is the state will fund special education at a much higher rate, then therefore the general fund need is going to come down, and then we can take that money and put it somewhere else, because the state is essentially putting more dedicated dollars for special ed.
That, ideally, that's what would happen.
That's ideally what we would like to happen, if the money's there.
If the state fully funds the new pupil-centered plan.
Okay.
And so, what the pupil-centered fund plan relies upon is a study by a firm called Augenblick that was done in, last year, that looked at how other states funded special education services, and basically looked at best practices and determined that we should be funding special ed with a weight of one. So, another one in addition to the one kind of dollar that general students get. So, in essence, they're saying, instead of each, a general education student might get a dollar for each dollar, general education student costs, it costs $2 to educate a special education student. Nevada currently funds that weight at .5. So, it's really at 1.5 that we currently provide funding, the state provides funding for, matched with local dollars, it needs to be at two, if that makes sense. So, it's a significant increase to the weighted dollars, again, if the state finds the money to do that.
Dr. McNeil?
Well, I just want to thank Jen and Mark for making this presentation typically. So, you can, you can look at this presentation, this is a grant application, and as you know, you all have to approve any grant application over $25,000. So, the IDEA grant for special education is one of our largest federal grants. It is direct to the state, and then we receive the dollars through that. The important point, though, is that the federal government, and we have advocated at the state level, and you all through NSBA, as far as raising that limit to the 40%. The federal government since PL 1942 has not increased the amount of federal funding, and so that's a significant issue across the country. Also, it's important to understand with Title I, as well as with IDEA, we have to make sure that we are within what's called maintenance of effort. And so, a district cannot reduce expenditures for a certain amount of time with maintenance of effort. And that's for a presentation at another time, but just so that you know that we do have to abide by maintenance of effort.
Yep. Vice President Raymond?
I was just going to carry over on to what Trustee Cottle was saying too, and I was able to go to some of the presentations about the new plan, funding plan. I think if there isn't an increase in funding, what the new model will do is just make it that much more clear for not only Washoe County, but for all the districts in the state, where we are putting in our own funding that has sort of gotten diluted in the, you know, current slash former model, that it just is part of our general fund, and it's, you know, rolled into other stuff, and there's no real sense of where the money's coming from. This is going to make it a lot more transparent how much the state is putting into special education versus the districts, if it is, if it goes the way which it's, you know, designed to do. I think that, hopefully, if it doesn't force the state to do more, you know, funding in that area, we'll put more of the pressure on them to explain why they aren't, I think. So, I don't know. And then I did have just one question. So, I, I'm trying to remember back to the budget, not that long ago. So, I think we added a child find position, but is that funded through the IDEA funding or federally funded, or?
No, so we did add a third child find team, and so this is that early intervention to identify, to assess and identify children in that three-year range for special needs. But no, our, essentially, our special education funding from the federal government and state government was fixed, so that additional cost is really borne by the general fund.
I got a question. So, if we have $91 million total, and we have 9,000 kids, we've got about $10,000 a student, how does that compare with what other districts are doing in the state? Would you come to the microphone, David? Thank you. And you have to, oh, Jennifer will turn you on there. JJ?
Hi. David Friedman, Executive Director, Special Ed, Office of School Leadership. Our percentage is over what other districts are doing, or at least some districts are doing. And the way the state works, it is anything over 13%, they won't fund it fully, because they want to avoid over identification. But I think we're within the range when you look at the districts, and as you know, like a student at PCOLO will cost, you know, a lot more than a student receiving resource services. So, we're within the range, but what we have seen a lot of is students coming from different states, and knowing that they're coming into our state, an IEP team convenes to give them the most amount of services, knowing that they don't have to provide it, but they're coming into our state, and we have to match that IEP in the beginning. And then our team will do an interim IEP to determine, do they truly need all those services? I'll say it's difficult, though, let's just say if they're coming from California and they put in a one-on-one aid, it would be difficult for us to really determine that they don't need that. Our goal is least restrictive environment, which is, you know, a huge part of IDEA and fostering independence. So, we look at those type of things.
Okay. Thank you. Well, it is a necessary investment, and it's an investment that we certainly believe in, and I hope that we have some hope on the horizon. The Augenblick study that was mentioned found that the average investment the state should be making for a student in Nevada was $9,283 versus the $6,024, is that right, that we'll get?
$0.34.
$0.34 that we'll get next year. So, just the shift is not necessarily going to solve our problems if we don't have more revenue coming into the pot that gets allocated. But this is, it's important for us to know and have this picture, so we really, we really thank you all. And we appreciate the challenging environment in which we deliver special education services. You know, philosophically, it changes, and what parents deserve and require, and the support that they need for us to be able to provide it within the funding that we have is a challenge. So, thank you to everybody who works so hard to make sure those kids get the free and appropriate public education that they deserve. Thanks. Any other questions? If not, is there any public comment? Okay, then this is an action item, so we do need a motion to approve that local plan. Thank you, Dr. Taylor.
Second.
Second by trustee Kelly. Is there any further discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? No opposed? Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. 3.04, Presentation and Discussion on the Operational Processes to Reduce Annual Unpaid Meal Charges in Schools in accordance with Board Policy 7546, School Nutrition Services to Include an Update on National School Lunch Program Changes to Students and Families Eligible to Receive Free and/or Reduced Meals. And we did have a, I hope you heard, that we had kudos for the school lunch today, when we heard from our students who had their first day of school reports they were making to us, right here on this stage. Yes. Lunch was fabulous, and I had a great breakfast burrito with you all yesterday, so. All right. Please go ahead.
So, I don't, could we start with the, so, Leonca Solis, Nutrition Services Director. One of the things that we wanted to just start with really quickly is a recap video, just to kind of show everybody what we did last year. It's brief, it's about two minutes long, and then we'll get into our update. Hopefully, it works. The audio and video.
Uh-oh, pressure's on, JJ.
Can we see the video?
Scott, Scott was getting ready there.
It was kind of waking us all up.
You're feeling it.
This is a live action.
It's operator error, it's not that.
Madam President, I did want to point out that a student did have some good things to say about nutrition services, but I heard some grumblings about the trustee meals in the bathroom there.
Oh, no.
That should be in the mix.
Oh. General Counsel says he's got it handled.
That's not on the agenda.
I didn't hear that, because my stomach was grumbling. Can you repeat that recently?
Oh, okay, we got it. I was really, really proud of our...
So, I, I certainly appreciate the opportunity to share that. So we'll jump right in. One of the other things that we were able to get accomplished last year was this transition over to CEP. So I wanted to provide an update on that. Right, so just to give a really brief kind of background, community eligibility provision or CEP, it's part of the Healthy Hunger Free Kids Act. It actually went nationwide in 2014, 15. So we've been kind of looking at this for a few years to see if it would be feasible for us to implement. All students at CEP schools receive free breakfast and lunch. No meal applications need to be completed or processed, so it definitely helps with administrative costs and kind of time. Eligibility is based upon identifying eligible, upon identifying eligible student percentages. And what that really means is it's students who are approved for free lunch without an application. So that's kind of what makes a school eligible. And I've been getting that question a lot, like what makes a school eligible? And it's if the population at that school has at least 40% of their students that are eligible for free lunch without completing an application, which means they receive some other type of federal assistance, right? So, the state, and the state provides that list to us. So they're receiving some, whether it's TANF or SNAP, or they're a foster student. It is a four-year cycle, but it can be reassessed or renewed annually, and you can also opt out at any time. So, but it does lock us in for four years. It also, I also wanted to talk about what this means for us operationally. There really is very limited operational impact. So last year, we had 22 schools that were on Provision II, so everybody there received free lunch and then, and breakfast. And we had two schools that were on CEP. Now moving to 39, what that means is there's actually 16 additional schools that are seeing some change in their operation. Of those, nine of them were breakfast after the bell schools, so they were already receiving free breakfast in their classroom. The only operational change now was that when they would come through the lunch line, their meal would also be free. We also had six traditional schools, so that's, that's our biggest impact in operations, yeah. So, we worked really hard to try to take, you know, as many schools as we could and worked very closely with the Title I office. And these, these six schools were the ones that, again, were going to notice the biggest change because they did not get any free meals last year, breakfast nor lunch. But we were able to take Inspire, Pacolo, and Turning Point, as well as three elementaries. So we were really happy about that. And then Desert Skies is opening as a Provision II base year as a new school because most of their feeders were also Provision II. And we are going to make the call about 30 days into operation, whether they will stay Provision II or go CEP. And it really just depends on those numbers that I was talking about before. And we just got our first state download late today, so we'll run that through today. And we're hoping to have another one within a couple of weeks. So we'll be able to see if there's enough of that other state qualifying factors at Desert Skies. And that's what's going to kind of determine which direction they'll go. So ultimately, I mean, the biggest impact is student meal access. So this is going to impact 40% of our schools, nearly 20,000 students. And again, we got almost all of the Title I schools covered. So there was a few that we couldn't get. One of them didn't qualify based on the, you know, that 40% of the students being identified. So, but we'll continue to look at that every year. And again, just to remind everyone, like, we can lock this in for four years. So it's not like we're going to pull the rug out, you know, next year. We're actually looking to continue to add on. And here is a list of the schools. You can see, we just put a little asterisk next to Desert Skies because we're not sure if they're going to go Provision II or CEP. But, you know, we are fully expecting them to, regardless of the direction that they go, that the students there will have free breakfast and lunch. So, looking at 40 schools going into this school year.
That's great.
So again, you know, it benefits everybody, really. It's a, it's a wonderful program and we're very happy that we're finally able to take advantage of it. So students have access to free meals, there's no stigma, right? Like everybody, the school's free. So you don't, there's no stigma behind it. No household applications to fill out, so it's great for parents, right? One last thing for them to kind of worry about, school staff. This should really streamline the meal period. So kids kind of come through, it's a clicker system. They just, you know, so we're not stopping at the point of sale. It really helps with speed of service. And ultimately for administrators, you know, it's reduced paperwork, we're not processing applications, there's not unpaid meal charges at those schools, so that's a good thing. And kind of on the compliance side for nutrition services, it does help us with our kind of claiming accuracy, again, because it's just such a streamlined way of counting and claiming those meals. So ultimately, it's just, it's a way for us to get our, get our students through, get them access to meals, hopefully give them more time to actually eat and be ready to learn in class, so.
And before we move off that, it's a great, great program and it's federally funded. It's federal money coming through the state to us. And, you know, it's one of the ways that Nevada can get back some of the taxes that we send to the federal government. This is a way that it gets returned to the peoples of people of our communities. So it's a great, great program. Everybody benefits, as you said.
And it does help with meal charge policy, like I mentioned before. So we'll, but I, we did want to also take this opportunity to just provide a real quick update on where we were at after last year. You know, I think it was about a little over a year ago that, you know, we talked about this. And it was a really difficult decision, but, you know, to kind of go to this, you know, a more, I guess accountability for some of the unpaid meal charges. But again, just to reiterate, we, we do allow charging, we never pull a tray from a student. That being said, once the account goes in the negative, we communicate a lot with our households, multiple forms. So you can kind of see the tiers there that we go through. But everything from phone calls to emails, we send out letters, three different letters and as well as personal calls to the home. And at every time, at every communication step, we let households know how they can apply for benefits, if that's something that they feel could help them. We let them know that they could set up a payment plan. We really just want them to communicate back with us. This is just kind of a history of, you know, how we got here and what we've done. So, you can see that in school year 16, 17, the Nevada Department of Agriculture did require all letters to go home stating the meal charge policy. And when we did that and let people know that it was unlimited charges, then you can see what slowly started to happen. Last, or in school year 17, 18, we certainly realized that we had an issue. And we started kind of meeting and it was an interdisciplinary group that kind of met and tried to figure out, how can we get in front of this? To increase communication efforts and also to just increase some accountability on the household side, like you did rack up this debt, you know, how can, we're letting you know about it and we're letting you know all your options. School year 18, 19 was the first year of the newly approved policy and we were down 20%. So, you know, we still have a ways to go, but it is definitely making a step in the right direction, right? We didn't double again, so. Our next steps, Nutrition Services is able to cover approximately half of the unpaid meal debt. And we're able to do that through our non-program revenue. And what that means is, you know, just something that's not a federal reimbursement. So anytime we sell any kind of, we call it an à la carte item. So if we sell a bottle of water, like an extra, you know, a bag of chips, or our catering programs, things like that, that are not federal reimbursement dollars coming in, we are allowed to use that, those excess revenues to cover the debt. And so we did have a, a good year with that last year. And so we are able to cover approximately half of the unpaid meal balance debt. And again, CEP is projected to decrease the overall negative balance, right? Because now instead of having 24 schools that don't have the opportunity to incur debt, we have 40 schools where there's not an opportunity to incur debt. And ultimately, we're still looking at collections as an ultimate last resort. You know, so we do have a, a list of accounts that we have made multiple communication efforts to, and we're still kind of working through that process with the State Controller's Office. But it is still out there as kind of a last resort.
Yes, Vice President Raymond?
Well, thank you. I was able to join President Simon Holland at Nutrition Services on Monday morning at 5:30 and was really impressed with the entire operation and the staff especially were so welcoming and gracious and, you know, it was just a privilege to be there to start the first day of school off. So thank you for welcoming us so nicely. Do you know the debt, that 104, what portion of that was incurred by schools that are now under the CEP?
Kyle Rodriguez, Senior Accountant. There was $26,000 roughly of debt that was at the CEP schools. So, we're hoping that is eliminated.
But that still leaves a pretty significant amount. So we haven't sent anyone to collections?
Not yet.
And we don't, as part of our policy, it's at the, at your discretion whether we do that collections step, or is it mandated by the policy that they go to collections at a certain point?
Well, what we, what we do is, we actually, the last step in the policy is that we do kind of an intervention step where we try to reach out with a personal phone call. We also do a last kind of like appeal notice and we do send home a letter, you know, just saying like, just write on this appeals form what your hardship is, or let us know if you want to fill out an application. And then those appeal forms are reviewed by a committee that is inclusive of, like our Chief Operations Officer and our Chief Financial Officer. And so it's a, it's kind of a interdisciplinary committee that is reviewing those. And we have received some of them this year and all the appeals that we have received were granted.
Great. I will just say again, which I know I said a lot last time, but I am just so uncomfortable with sending anyone to collections. I am disappointed that the dollar amount isn't lower with that kind of threat looming. And I hope that with more education, it will be lower. But I think I just fall back to kind of the national sort of vibe of, you know, kind of, there, we have a large population here that I think are afraid to fill out any kind of paperwork. And I just really primarily worry about that population of people being put in any kind of further stress or distress because of this policy. So I just really hope we're careful and not, you know, jumping the gun, which I can see we haven't, you know, I know we're following the policy, but I just, I am very uncomfortable with the collections part still. And I voted for the policy. I, I agree that we need to do something, but it just really concerns me, you know, for that population primarily. So, just putting it out there again.
Dr. Taylor?
Thank you, Madam President. And I'm going to, I'm going to concur. I mean, it's, that's a difficult thing to think about. And we just see the results, what happens when we don't do anything. So, you know, where do we land? But thank you for making it such a long process and giving them an appeals and everything that we can to get there. I'm looking at the slide, that's the slide after the thank you slide. And it, and it shows our unpaid meal balances. I find it very interesting that almost 80% have such a low balance. I mean, are less than, it's less than $20. It's just, it's just, any, any thoughts on that? It just really threw me when I saw that.
I mean, and what, I mean, what that says, you know, to me is that the multiple communication efforts, I think, are working. And I think that when people realize that they do owe money, they are sending in something to try to kind of mediate that. And then, you know, and then they kind of rack up debt again. But they kind of stay right in that, the, the majority of our delinquent accounts kind of stay in that lower range before, you know, kind of escalating. And we are doing some things internally within Nutrition Services as well to try to be a little bit more proactive about that this school year. And, you know, really start looking at, you know, as we start seeing some of the debt go up, like, kind of try to cross-reference, are those accounts that have perhaps applied for meal benefits and they were denied because they, you know, maybe didn't check a certain box or, you know, something like that? Because the, the meal application could sometimes be a little tedious. So we do always encourage, you know, our, our families to please reach out to us if they have any questions about, you know, the meal application. But we are trying to stay a little bit more in front of it. We've actually restructured one of our internal positions within our department to help with that.
Thank you. I just thought, I just wanted to know your thoughts on that because it just, for it to be such a large percentage, for it to be such a, I mean, that's good work, you know, in that, but, yeah, I just find it very interesting.
And another thing could be, as we've increased prices over the year, I mean, some parents, when they go online and put money on their accounts, they're calculating the meal price and stuff like that. And if they don't, aren't aware of it, that's where the nickels and dimes come in. And so there's a lot of these accounts that are just, you know, cents that are adding up and stuff like that. And, you know, they try to finish out the school year perfectly, so they're not leaving anything on the books, even though it does roll over. But just trying to make it clear.
Well, also kudos for the great job that you all do. And I, I'm so impressed with all of the efforts that you made and, you know, your videos certainly showed some of them, the, you know, the food truck and the sort of rebranding of the cafeterias and the getting the kids involved in testing the meals. Just so many things you've done, really creative meal design, just really great things, making it cool to eat lunch at school, you know? That, I know that's your goal. And I also, I know we have to, we have to have this conversation because it's a lot of money. I really want to thank you all for using some of the, your side of the ledger to, to pay half of that unpaid meal balance, which is very cool. And we, we're grateful for that. So thank you for the good work and it was, I share Malina's comments, it was great to see everybody yesterday morning. I'm still disappointed, I did not go over and see the vat of chili being made that I got to see the last time I was there, that I commented was practically big enough for me to drown in. But I think you said that you were making 50,000 meals a day. 50,000 meals. Think about that.
And that, you know, that carries its breakfast, lunch, after-school snack, and then the supper programs that we do at the schools that do a kids cafe through Northern Nevada Food Bank. And then we also supply to the Head Starts throughout town and some of the childcare agencies.
Wow. I mean, very, very impressive. So thanks for the great job and thank you to all of the staff from all of us, I know. Dr. McNeil?
Well, and just a note of thanks as well, because I know that the food bank and our little ones, you all design special meals for our little ones. And I know that that is very much appreciated. And then also our principals, you know, it's very difficult for our principals when they have relationships with the families. And so I just want to do a shout out to all of you for repurposing that position because that helps our administrators keep those, those very important relationships. So thank you. And I was out at STED yesterday and the Nutrition Services Manager was totally stoked that there were no more cards. I mean, she was just very, very, very excited. So it was awesome. So thank you all very much.
Pretty impressive.
And that is pretty cool about the jacuzzi of meat.
Jacuzzi of meat. Dr. Taylor?
I just wanted to add, there was, which one of the schools, we were, I think it was Desert Sky- was Desert Skies, yeah, it was Desert Skies. And as we were leaving, one of the staff members, we were talking about those that were in the, that were in CEP, that everything was free. He was talking about how his, he had come back to give his child lunch money because he had forgotten to give her money. And then the staff member saw and said, oh no, you don't have to pay for lunch. And he said, oh, but she had breakfast, right? No, breakfast and lunch is free for everyone. He said, free food and a new school too? It was like score. But he was, that family, that guy was very excited. He was very excited.
That's great. And thank you for implementing the CEP program. That, I know we didn't get at that right away and now we are. And what a wonderful, wonderful benefit to our community. So, thank you for whatever the work was that had to be done to make that happen. Really, really cool, so.
Thank you all, thank you for your support. It was definitely a team effort.
All right. Okay, Mr. Cottle.
I just want to also say thank you and I know I've been asked a couple of times, so how much debt are you going to rack up with the free lunch? Like, none. I mean, it's federal dollars and so, of course, we need to capitalize on this and we need to be excited about these new opportunities and try to turn the tide of always going to that, that negative of, oh no, what are we doing now? So, we're excited about the things that are happening and we appreciate your work and the staff's work to get the kids fed.
Thank you.
And you can knock down the debt even more with the Office of General Counsel using catering.
There you go.
Again, it's on the agenda.
Can we put a standing item for abuse of the Office of General Counsel? Thank you guys very much. Okay, 3.05, we are racing through this agenda. 3.05, presentation discussion and possible, possible, you guys caught me. Possible action to approve, it's a positive thinking thing, to approve the allocation of $54,870,000 to the 2019-2020A Major Projects Program as recommended by the Capital Funding Protection Committee. Mr. Cersei, who was busy yesterday talking about new schools and that was very cool. Pete, are you joining him or are you going to leave him hanging out there alone? Okay, all right.
Hopefully, I got this. Yes, good evening, thank you very much. So, super positive day yesterday, super exciting day. So many people making yesterday happen. Really here tonight to talk about what's next in a lot of ways. So, you know, just to clarify upfront, this is sort of a condensed version of the presentation that the Capital Funding Protection Committee received. This is a presentation of their recommendations. So, I'm going to cover essentially three different projects. I'm going to cover a bit of information that was presented for information and discussion only, several items that were presented for action. And then ultimately, this is sort of rolled up into one single action on the agenda. So, I'm going to move through some of this swiftly. Do not hesitate to interrupt, ask questions, we can dive into details anywhere you like. But this is sort of the overview of the information that I'm going to cover. And just for fun, that's an aerial image of the Marcy Hurst Middle School.
Wow.
From several weeks ago, actually. They are moving quickly. But what's up for tonight is some updates, some information-only items and a little bit of funding allocation requests associated with the new high school at Wild Creek. Moving into land acquisition, right off the bat, a lot has happened since the last time we've publicly discussed this project at this forum. So, cooperative agreement, you guys are familiar with. Both closings have been finalized. The 87, approximately 87 acres outlined in blue there is now currently owned by the Washoe County School District. So, that money and everything has been transferred and is final. The golf course is operating seamlessly as they have under a temporary, basically lease agreement between the school district and the county. And that's hopeful to change here soon. So, moving forward, we own the property, we're nearing final design. And this is an approximate schedule, but it was really intended to give everyone, you know, a general sense of what's to come. We've executed this development agreement with the City of Sparks, very specific, very official, that's been executed by their city council. The project of regional significance associated with relocation of the transmission line has been approved and is final. And we're moving into the permitting stages here very shortly. So, you can see a relatively rapid succession of construction contracts. All of those green stars represent an agenda item before this board, you know? So, there's funding allocation action associated with this evening's item, but as with all of our projects, we'll be bringing them back before we actually move into construction to this body. So, one item that ultimately is a part of the action this evening is supplemental design phase funding. So, this is composed of a couple of different categories. First off, basically, the original contract with the architects or the RFP stipulated that their fees could not be greater than 7% of the final construction costs. So, based on that and other assumptions, we've allocated a certain amount to date. We've proceeded through each phase of the design based on an estimate of 160 million for the total project costs. Currently, that estimate is closer to 200 million. This results in a necessary reconciliation of fees of approximately 2.8 million. This reconciliation will not occur until the actual construction costs are known, but in the interest of getting this budget approved in advance, we wanted to bring this up at this time. Also, associated with this supplemental design phase budgetary request are some pretty significant fees that are associated with moving this project into construction. It's largely based on construction costs and the size of the project, but these are substantial fees in the, in the range you see there that will ultimately need to be paid before we can move into construction. So, this is rolled in again to the singular action at the end of the presentation, but to break it down, approximately 2.8 million, again, budgetary allocation for final design, supplemental design costs, approximately 2.7 estimated budget for permitting and miscellaneous fees. And then a supplemental budget of 500,000 for miscellaneous survey, exploration, and final design elements that may be necessary before we move into construction, totaling 6 million there. This was an item that we took to capital funding for presentation only, but again, to help familiarize the board as well with what is ultimately anticipated to be brought back for action. You see this with all of our schools, construction costs, FFNE costs, professional services costs. We haven't presented this yet, but here it was sort of a high-level overview of some of the unique FFNE elements associated with high schools, higher-end, more specialized, whether it's science, CTE equipment, band and orchestra, obviously, comprehensive athletic. All of that is included as well as just the scale of the school is, you know, much more significant. So, again, for information only, these are costs associated with opening this high school, estimated to be in the 15 to 18 million dollar range. This is just an aerial of the second floor of the school that's, you know, been schematically populated with furniture. So, just to give you a sense of the many, many, many pieces and parts that fill up the school. Along the same lines with FFNE, construction professional services, I tried to break down what that entails, whether it's construction administration on behalf of the architect, third-party special inspection, staff augmentation is significant on a project this intense with hundreds of tradesmen working many millions of dollars per month being executed in construction. The school district staff will need support in that role. This will also account for school district staff time, various other professional services. This is a significant effort that we'll need to contract with a variety of professional service providers for. This is, again, an estimate, but want to try and tell the story repeatedly and completely before we're at the point where we're asking for action. This is just another update as well. Back in June, we presented this for information. We'll come back in October to capital funding and request action on this budget and then subsequently to the school board. But this is an update, it's rather high level. We presented in June a range of estimated total construction costs. I can confidently say that this is moving significantly in the right direction. 3% to 5%, I can confidently basically account for at this, at this point. Sounds like small numbers, but on this scale, it's a lot, it's millions of dollars and we're continuing to push very hard to move that needle in the right direction. We're still looking in that 187 to 209. And again, that's total project construction costs only, not inclusive of the FFNE and professional services expenses or design expenses associated with this project. Again, looking to value engineer that building design as efficiently as possible. Just an update. So, another component of the action this evening is associated with the ore ditch relocation. I wanted to delve into just a little bit more detail for those of, you know, for anybody who maybe is not as familiar with the area. A crude exhibit here, you can, I tried to basically trace the existing alignment of the ore ditch across the existing golf course overlaid on our proposed school campus. You can see it's going right through where we want to build the school and needs to be relocated. The east-west sort of, you know, dark dash line on the southern bottom end of the exhibit is where we're proposing to relocate the ditch to. Also noted on there, this serves as stormwater conveyance year-round, so it needs to be sized not only for the irrigation water, but also a maximum stormwater event that, you know, could have hundreds of, you know, cubic feet per second going through this ditch. So, along that alignment, if you look east to west there, if you're familiar with the course out there, it's kind of in a draw. It's in a ravine. And this next slide is the profile view of the culvert pipes, basically, that we're going to put this into. I think it's neat, this is my little civil engineering geek out that it absolutely goes down and then comes back up. And it's because the inlet is higher than the outlet that it will actually create enough pressure to push that water uphill and out the other side. So, it's an inverted siphon, they call it. There's actually three pipes. Again, you'll see a significant cost associated with this. It's relatively simple, it's just on a large scale. So, we're going to have major head walls, concrete head walls at either end and some pond reconstruction to facilitate. You can see this again, a little zoomed in. You've just got three culverts going from one side of the golf course to the other and then that pond in the middle that's going to serve not only as the low-point outlet for this inverted siphon, but also it will be like the downstream outlet for all of the stormwater coming off of the campus. It will pond in that golf course pond and then get dispersed out across the golf course as it does today. So, again, just to orient everyone, you can kind of see the existing clubhouse in the lower left-hand corner of that exhibit. You can kind of orient yourself. The clubhouse, everything south of that line, this is actually on Washoe County property, this won't be on the school district property. We have an agreement with Washoe County and the Ore Ditch Company actually to do this work, but Washoe County is responsible for maintaining this infrastructure, which will be on their property. The school district's responsibility is really just to design, permit, and construct this facility. So, sort of the breakdown here as I described before, the construction costs, the FFNE, not applicable in this instance, and then a little bit for permitting fees and some special testing and inspection of the construction. This is a budgetary allocation request, 5.17 million for all of this construction work and then the 500,000 on top of that for 5.67 million total budgetary allocation request. So, again, that's rolled into the final action later. This is sort of a summary. I won't walk through all of these bullets, but just wrapping up, this is the last slide on Wild Creek, kind of where we're at.
And GMP is Guaranteed Maximum Price?
That's the acronym, thank you, yes.
Thank you, okay.
Okay, I'm going to keep moving into the Cold Springs Elementary School. We've talked about this and presented on this at school board previously. You may recall some community meetings up in Cold Springs. We talked about where to build that school is sort of a unique success story. We were able to ask for public feedback and modify our site location based on their preference. This is direly needed. Nancy Goems Elementary School will be, is now the most overcrowded elementary school in our district. So, absolutely the next place we need to address overcrowding. We've partnered closely with Lifestyle Homes and specifically Bob Listner in the master planning of this. We're acquiring the property at tremendous discount from Lifestyle Homes. The site has actually already been mass graded in conjunction with the adjacent subdivision that they're developing, again, at a significant construction cost discount. So, we're really excited about the location, the need, and really the planning that's gone into this one.
I just want to interject there, I was out there with communication staff with Riley and did a little video at the site and one of the guys that was grading the site for Aspen Groundworks or whatever their name of their company is, he was up on the giant watering machine, you know, keeping the dust down. And he volunteered to be in our video and he was so excited because his grandchildren will go to this school and he lives right there. And he was, you know, so excited to be working on that project to build that new school. It was really cool that just completely, you know, out of the blue.
So, it's going to look, it's going to be the same design as Polakita's and Bowhatch. Wanted to mention that. This is probably taken the day you were up there, but this is basically what the site looks like now, if any of you are familiar, the far northern end of Cold Springs. But it's, it's ready to go. Part of replicating this prototype design, it does allow us enhanced speed. We're able to replicate the design more quickly each time. It's going to give us some advantages delivering it to construction earlier in the schedule, basically on the back end. We'll likely have a little bit more breathing room to, you know, get the teachers and get the furniture in there and not be so rushed on the back end. We've all felt that stress the last few weeks. But, you know, as with anything, practice makes perfect. So, we're going to get this to construction hopefully a little bit sooner than we have on the past two, which we've still delivered on time. Want to highlight that we did bring in an independent professional construction management firm to do an independent cost estimate on the documents, you know? So, there's some minor adjustments they took into consideration, lots of very relevant recent market factors, taking continuous market escalation into account as well as the actual bid value on Bowhatch. We just opened really only a few months ago and doing our, doing our best to accurately forecast a budget for this next elementary school. That 36.5 is what you're going to see on this next slide. So, just really for context, we've been comparing these now to the most recent iteration. This was the actual budget, you may recall, for John Bowhatch. The bids came in over the budget for the construction. We proceeded with the award for a variety of reasons, not least of which the dire need, but also the total budget allocation was within the bid amount. So, we're well underway there. You can see the line in blue is what is being recommended for a budget allocation here for the Cold Springs Area Elementary School, a total of 42.2 million, inclusive of all of the FFNE expenses and anticipated fees and professional services there as well in addition to the total construction budget.
Adam, how did that, how does our construction budget compare with the...? Adam, how did that, how does our construction budget compare with the independent estimator? Or did the independent estimator come up with that budget?
The latter. The 36.5 there is the number that they developed in conjunction with our staff, our architect. It was scrutinized extensively, modified, but the, the final number that our team with their assistants agreed to, and this is a 50-page report, you know, thing, very detailed. That's where the 36.5 came from.
Okay, so that, that was a, that was an external professional construction estimator that gave us that number?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, so that's, that's my last slide on this project. Again, the 42.2 is rolled into the final number for action here later, but that's intended to take us through opening day of this school, which is anticipated to be August 2021.
Wow.
So I'm going to keep moving into the final topic here. Current technical educational facility at HUG. We've been talking about this in a lot of ways for a lot of years, but the time has finally come to actually start doing things on this one. You've heard bits and pieces of this for a long time. I won't reiterate it, but really the first step is hiring an architect team and a consultant to help us develop the educational program and facility programming for this campus. Anticipate, there will be a lot of public conversation on this. Workshops, educators, alumni, facility professionals, CTE experts, likely even, you know, of course, our academic and CTE staff experts, but likely industry professionals, people that have a pulse on what programs are most needed and most well-suited for the existing facility. It is our objective to, well, it'll be a complicated balance of all of these factors. And we're going to look to hire the most well-qualified professional to help guide us through that process. You know, likely, we, we've made significant investments into this campus recently, including specifically three outstanding new signature academy CTE-type facilities. Those are likely to be preserved and remain. It's absolutely still our objective to preserve and maintain the extracurricular opportunities at the existing campus, you know. But for the most part, that's the extent of sort of the box that we're drawing for these folks to reimagine what this campus could be in the future. So our intent is to move forward with an RFP for these professional services, hire this architect and ed spec team and, and move into that space programming and preliminary design process. These RFPs take time, so it'll likely be early 2020 before we really start having those conversations. Again, the high-level intent is that the new high school at Wild Creek opens in August 2022. During that time, those students from HUG have been rezoned over into the new high school, leaving the HUG campus vacant for some very intensive renovations, likely vacant for an entire year. And the goal will be to reopen that campus in a new reimagined CTE-type of academic format August 2023. Making some bold predictions several years into the future. We'll look to these professionals to make all those bold predictions come true. But this is, this is the first step of many on a very exciting project that we've all, you know, talked about and had our minds set on for, for years.
Adam, what will happen for the students that are in culinary, sports medicine, and human development at HUG when we move all the students over to the high school at Wild Creek? Will they have those programs at the high school at Wild Creek?
So we're looking at that now because what we want to do is to make sure that we're not accepting students that don't have a program and available to them. So we are looking at that right now as far as either cutting off that type of program. But, you know, Wild Creek has been designed to have more of a baking-type culinary, where HUG High School right now has a full culinary-type program. But we are taking a look at so that we're not accepting a child or a student in a program and then they don't have any access to that programming.
And we also have the health sciences at, at HUG now too, don't we? Yeah, so, okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so that's the, the conclusion of really the presentation content. This is a slide hopefully you guys are familiar with. We try and stick with that format. You can see the breakdown of the items I presented previously. The funding for the ore ditch construction, the design reconciliation, all for Wild Creek. They're totaling 11.67. The 1 million for the ed specs and programming preliminary design at HUG. And the full construction funding, 42.2 for the Cold Springs Area Elementary School, totaling an action of 54.87. I'll also add, you can see the second column, total allocations to date, listed in the second column. And then the third column is a new one that we're trying to close the loop on. The two projects, these are, you know, verbatim out of the WC1 ballot measure. These projects were, closed the books on only two of them. Obviously several of them are soon to be closed out, but expenditure is really still funneling in on these schools that we just opened. So, you know, trying to be transparent and show the whole story from beginning to end. You can see the additions of the Monte Ranch and the grounds facility replacement, both coming in over the amount that was allocated on those items. I don't have an image, but attached to board docs and possibly in your packet is another pretty rigorous, comprehensive breakdown of all of the allocations to date associated with all of the capital-funded projects since WC1, since mid 2016. It's pretty intense, but again, tremendous amount of transparency here. You can see kind of in the beige peach line item, the, the funding dates and amounts. And then all of the other line items are the individual projects where allocations were made, actions were taken, and then the total amounts. You can see the Capital Funding Protection Committee approval date. Of course, all those meetings and records are available online. And then the associated, this is actually a Capital Funding Protection Committee recommendation, right, to the Board of Trustees and the date at which the Board of Trustees took action and approved all of those. So I think this is a, you know, a healthy accounting that, you know, may evolve over time, but we wanted to make note of that as well. So that is the conclusion of the information I have. Again, summarized in a, a single action item for 54.87 million.
Thank you, Adam. Dr. Taylor?
Thank you, Madam President. In light of the fact that we just opened three schools, we can just continue the excitement that's going on here. And also in light of the fact that it's 8/19. I move that to the Board of Trustees.
We have public comment. We have public comment. Thank you. And as JJ's calling that, again, thank you to the whole team for all of the work that goes into this. I really appreciate this bond issuance chart because I was starting to lose track of where we were with what money. And this is really helpful to be able to identify, this is what we did when, and this was the purpose for it, and this was the source of it. So I know that was a ton of work and I just want to say thank you for that. And just thank you for the amazing effort that everybody is taking to, to make our schools happen. This is, it's very impressive. So thank you all. Public comment?
Todd Bailey?
Mr. Bailey, welcome.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I know this is the beginning of the allocation process, so we don't really have any requests for information. But as time goes on and the projects move forward, we may have some questions or may even request a tour of some of the facilities, just to look at some of the work that's been done. Two quick points on this. This is probably the largest allocation I've ever seen out of Washoe County School District. There may have been a bigger one, but I've, I've never seen one that reaches $54 million. My memory has something about a 60 one out there, but I don't remember that specific date. Two important things. 10 years ago, around 2009, the cost of an elementary school was on the high end, $20 million. And now we're talking about an elementary school that's over $40 million, I think I just saw. So the cost of that has doubled. So I hope somewhere someone's doing a projection on tax money coming in as it relates to allocations over the increasing cost of elementary schools, because that's obviously going to go up. And we've had a series of tax increases. And in fact, we've actually taken the voters out of the capitalization process. The last legislature actually extended this district a 10-year credit plan without voter approval because the district had too much of a hard time getting voter approval for these. So we'll be tracking this. My last question, just as simply, at that time, the big discussion for many years was the older schools in the district, mostly inside the McCarran Loop, that needed revitalization, upgrades to technology. So when it comes to this $54 million that's being allocated, my question is simply, how much of that money is going to the older schools for revitalization and technology upgrades? Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. And all of that information you're seeking is on our wcstbuilding.com. And we spent about, Mr. Bailey, we spent about $15 million this summer on improvements to the core schools. And that's in addition to something like 40 million we have spent from WC1 funds prior to this summer. So, and if you would like to get a copy of that chart that's up there, it is in our board docs. It's posted online, but that does show what all of those bond issuances have been for. Our finance department has done a tremendous job, along with financial advisors, in looking at the forecasting of revenues. So far, our sales tax revenues are coming in way ahead of schedule and, but we're still being conservative in the amount of money that we're issuing. So I hope you'll be pleased with all of the information that is already posted on the wcstbuilding.com that shows that. Okay, any other public comment? Now you may make your motion.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that to the Board of Trustees approves the allocation of $54,870,000 to the 2019-2020A Projects Program as recommended by the Capital Funding Protection Committee.
Okay, so second. Second by Vice President Freeman.
And thank you to those folks too, by the way, the Capital Funding Protection Committee.
Yes, indeed. Yes, indeed. And they are, they are big fans. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. So thank you and thank you to the whole team. Pete, your presentation was stunning, as usual, just absolutely riveting. All right, thank you. We will move on to 3.06, Discussion and Possible Action on the Recommendation of the Group Insurance Committee for a Group Health Insurance Rate Increase of 5%. Elimination of the EPO Plan, which I've already forgotten what it stands for, and Emily was kind enough to tell me. Increase the PPO Plan, out-of-pocket maximum $4,000 per year. Decrease copayments for physical therapy, occupational therapy, speech therapy, chiropractic visits and acupuncture to $35 per visit. Increase urgent care visits for $65 per visit. And increase retail generic prescriptions to a $15 copayment for plan year 2020. We have here our Chief Human Resources Officer, Emily Ellison, Risk Manager, Jackie James. And I know we have some folks from the WEA here and other folks who are interested. So we'll get to them momentarily, but please go ahead, Emily and Jackie.
All right, good evening. President Simon Holland, Interim Superintendent Dr. McNeil. Emily Ellison, for the record, Chief Human Resources Officer. And I am joined by Jackie James, our Risk Manager. And President Holland, Simon Holland, you did a great job of covering the information. That's everything we had to say.
Reading, I can read. If you can read, thank a teacher, yeah.
I'm sorry, so just to recap, each year we go through an analysis process where we look at, in very simple terms, the revenue that we've taken into the insurance fund as part of our self-insured health benefits program, and then compare that to the expenses to that fund. So claims processed, because as a self-insured entity, we pay our claims out of that fund. And so we have to make sure that revenues are sufficient to cover incurred claims and projected claims. And when we discover that there is an imbalance between those two numbers, for example, in this coming plan year, the 2020 plan year, we believe that there will be a little bit of a revenue shortfall to cover anticipated claims. And so we work with our Group Insurance Committee to determine what rates for premiums and plan design should look like for the coming year to make sure that, again, that there's a balance between those two sides, the revenue and the expenses. So that said, the analysis is done by our broker, LP Insurance. And for the 2020 plan year, they indicated that there was going to need to be about a 6.02% increase in either premium revenue or decreases to plan expenses in order to make sure that there was an appropriate balance and that the fund stays solvent. So our insurance committee has met several times over the summer to look at options and understand the data that is being shared with them and what options are available to them. And so the recommendations that you have here tonight are the recommendations from the committee. And the district did budget for a 5% increase to premiums for employee, active employee coverage for the 2020 plan year. And so the committee was looking to make up a difference of about 1%. So the plan design changes that you see will reduce expenses to the plan by increasing the out-of-pocket maximum, increasing the, sorry, we're doing out-of-pocket maximum. The elimination of the EPO Plan, which is the exclusive provider organization. That's a plan that is currently our most expensive plan, not only to participate in, but to maintain. And there's only about 145 of our 8,000 or so employees participating in that plan. Like I said, we're increasing the out-of-pocket maximum from 3,500 to 4,000 per year. And then we're increasing urgent care co-pays from 50 to $65 per visit and increasing retail generic prescriptions to a $15 copay from a $10 copay in this plan year. The insurance committee did also take into consideration feedback that we get frequently from our plan members in making these changes. And one of the benefits that plan members significantly utilize, but also that we get a lot of feedback on, are what we call the therapy services. So physical therapy, occupational therapy, speech therapy, acupuncture and chiropractic services. And those are typically services that you would access not just one time, like an urgent care visit, right, but repeatedly, repeat services. And so they took action as a part of this to decrease co-pays for those services from 50 to $35 per visit. So I think they were really taking action to be very responsive to plan member needs and, and designing a plan that, that, you know, is a little more user-friendly for our plan members. So with that said, is there anything that you'd like to add that I didn't cover?
I think just to add to what Emily said with regards to the rate projection, another factor that's also added in there is we have to look at what the trend is, what medical trend is. We know that medical expenses are consistently going up. And so that is factored in along with our, with our member usage.
And I appreciated what message that has been sent out to employees that, you know, there was a question about, well, didn't we just sign up with Anthem? And there's supposed to be a savings from that. I think the important point there is that the premium increase would have been greater had we not been able to get that contract with Anthem and access their network of providers for being able to slow the costs.
Yeah, I think that's something that a lot of folks don't realize, right? We haven't been able to, to realize those savings yet because we haven't switched to Anthem. But we did factor that into the rate calculation. And also, we hope that by, I'll steal from Mark his saying, by, you know, bending the cost curve a little bit, even if our utilization stays the same, by accessing the Anthem network and having more in-network providers, especially for some of our larger claims that are serviced out of area and for our prescription benefit program, that in future years, we'll be able to realize even more savings.
Great. Other questions? Trustee Kelly?
Thank you, Madam President. I just, Emily, I had a question about, so when, when the plan is, when there's an imbalance in the plan and you have to close that gap and make up for that imbalance, is passing the cost of that imbalance onto the employees, is that the only option that we have? Like, is, you know, increasing the rates and increasing the out-of-pocket PPO? Like, is, you know, increasing the rates and increasing the out-of-pocket PPO, is that our only option? Or can't there be other options where the pain isn't quite so hard for our staff that we can work with our providers and do other things?
So those are, when you're, when you've got an imbalance of revenue and cost, right, those are really the only two options to course correct for the coming year. So you either need to increase the premiums that you're bringing into the plan, or do the plan design changes that decrease the expense to the plan. So for example, if a copay for urgent care goes from fifty to sixty-five dollars per claim, that's fifteen dollars less that's going to be incurred by the plan in, in terms of paid claims. So generally, the, the approach has been a combination of the two, right? So a little bit on the premium side and then a little bit on the plan design side. But the best way to avoid having to do those kinds of things is to control our costs. So then that speaks to your point about working with our, our carrier, right, to make sure that we have the most competitive contract rates for service, because again, that will decrease the expense to the plan. But then also making sure that our members understand how utilization impacts the plan. So emergency care is a great example, right? If you go to the emergency room for something that can be treated in urgent care, or is more appropriately treated in urgent care, then the emergency room claim is going to be significantly higher and more expensive to the plan than an urgent care visit would be versus, you know, if somebody's going to urgent care for their primary care, if we can get them into a primary care provider for regular doctor's appointments and preventative medicine, that further drives that cost down. So it's really kind of a two-pronged approach. And I think often there are questions around why the focus on wellness and whether or not the wellness program is necessary. I think you have to have both components in order to continue to drive, you know, not only the solvency of the plan, but good consumer behavior as well. Because we, as individuals, really do have a significant impact on that, that balance that we're looking for, so.
And Emily, that was a question I was going to ask. How has been the performance of our wellness program in constraining costs?
I think, I'll defer to Jackie for specifics, right? But I think year over year, we've seen increased participation. We have had a few years in recent times where we've had an extraordinary number of large claims that were out of, out of the norm for our plan. And so that, of course, has really affected the trend data. But in terms of overall, like wellness participation, and I think at, at times, it's hard to draw a line between, you know, we did X and it had this impact to the fund, but I think, I think participation has definitely been increased.
Yes, participation has increased, and we are transitioning, transitioning to a new wellness platform starting September third. So we're really encouraged and excited about the new platform. It's supposed to be a national wellness program, and that's what they specialize in. So we're hoping that all of our members are going to get more engaged and be really excited about the, everything that the platform has to offer and the new look and feel of it. So prior, I think members had a little bit of a difficult time maneuvering the website that, that we had through Healthy Trax. And so I think this, the new one called Virgin Pulse is, is really going to speak to the members and help get more engagement.
Okay, good. Other questions? Yep, trustee Kelly.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, look, I think about our staff and their ages. We have a lot, a lot of staff that are mid twenties to, into their thirties, and that's, that's an age where a lot of people are starting families and having kids. Is there anything in the plan that makes it a little bit cost effect, more cost effective or lessens the costs or the burden to have a child? Like, I'm not sure where that would fit, because I didn't see anything about childbirth or labor or delivery. So what's happening with that?
So the Affordable Care Act actually gave a lot of, I don't know, substance, if you will, to health plans in general around women's wellness and well-baby visits. And so I'm not that far out from, from having a baby not that long ago. And so I, I had the benefit of, of that coverage, right? So well-baby, well-baby visits, I believe, covered it a hundred percent, as are women's wellness visits. And then I think OB care is primary care, right? So thirty-five-dollar copay for your maternity. We'll look at the exact numbers, but there, there are some incentives, or not incentives, that's not the right word, but there is, there is coverage for maternal care and maternal medicine.
Other questions? Okay, should we call public comment? Oh, Natha and Mr. Strauss. You stayed here the whole time just to do that? Four and a half hours?
Wow.
Yeah, yeah, boy, they don't pay you enough. Okay. Is there a motion? Vice President Raymond, somebody?
I would just say, I think I probably speak on behalf of all the trustees that this isn't a motion that we want to make. We don't like ever, I think, I don't like ever having to increase any costs for our employees. But I think just, you know, having heard your presentation, but also knowing kind of nationally and locally what's happening with insurance, this is sort of the state of healthcare in our country. So I will move that the Board of Trustees approves the recommendation of the Insurance Committee for a five-percent rate increase, elimination of the EPO Plan, increase PPO out-of-pocket maximum from thirty-five-hundred to four thousand per year, reduce the copayments for physical therapy, occupational therapy, speech therapy, chiropractic visits, and acupuncture from fifty dollars per visit to thirty-five dollars per visit, increase urgent care visits from fifty dollars per visit to sixty-five dollars per visit, and increase retail generic prescriptions from a ten-dollar copayment to fifteen-dollar copayment effective January first, two thousand twenty.
Is there a second? Second by trustee Calvert. And a big thank you to the Insurance Committee and to you all for all of the work that went through, went, that people went through to get us to this result. And we appreciate the Employee Association representatives that serve on that committee and have pored through page by page and item by item and statistics and utilization and finance, so we're very, very grateful for that. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, motion carries six to one, and we'll record that vote. Okay, thank you. And Jackie gets to leave and Emily gets to stay. Oh. See, see how Pete is? Oh, there he is. Okay. Okay. Okay, and three point zero seven is continuation of agenda item three point zero six from the July twenty-third, twenty nineteen regular meeting of the Board of Trustees. Discussion and possible action to provide direction to staff regarding the process for selecting the superintendent of schools for the Washoe County School District, including but not limited to consideration of the timeline for hiring, the process for soliciting input from Board of Trustees, staff, students, families, and community members on the professional qualifications and personal characteristics that are desired for superintendent, the interview and selection process, the scope of recruitment efforts, local, regional, or national search facilitator options, and the possible issuance of a request for proposal for a consultant or search firm to support one or more of the search activities. And Emily is here, of course. We did begin this discussion last time, and because we didn't have all of our trustees here, much as they would have liked to have been here, we did think it was important to delay this discussion. I did note that interim superintendent McNeil will not stay for the whole discussion, but she did ask to be able to make a comment, which I very much appreciated. And so I thought we would let her make her comment, and then she can, she can leave and go do other things like respond to a hundred and fifty emails.
Hundred and seventeen.
Oh, I was close.
Very good. Well, thank you very much, President Simon Holland. I just want to put on the record, as the interim superintendent, I am a very strong advocate that the trustees contemplate going out for a search process. I do believe very strongly that that is in the best interest of our school district. You all know my passion and my dedication for our school district, but I do feel very, very strongly that it is the right thing to do to go out for a search process. So with that, I will be back later for our end of the round report.
Okay, thank you, Dr. McNeil. Emily?
All right, Megan. As President Simon Holland mentioned, we did have a conversation about this at the last meeting, but two important perspectives were not here to be shared, so we wanted to continue that conversation. I know that it's late, and we probably don't want to do a redo of the whole conversation because we had really great dialogue. But I thought that I would kind of summarize the major themes and decisions that came out of that initial conversation and kind of highlight some of the things that we talked about before, and then discuss a couple of decision points that I think will be really helpful in determining where we go from here. So I have the clicker. Excellent. We, we started the conversation last time by looking at some of the major milestones that would be a part of the superintendent's search process, and this is by no means an all-encompassing list, but this was a good place to start the conversation. And so as it related to the timeline, action was taken by the board to set the goal of having someone in place for the next school year. And ideally, that person would start during the summer prior to the new school year beginning, of course, dependent on the search process itself and the outcome of that. But that, that goal is important for us to have in order to work backwards from in planning and, and thinking about each of the steps that needs to happen. As it relates to identifying the desired qualifications and characteristics, I'm going to refer to that kind of as the superintendent profile moving forward. And there seemed to be universal agreement on broad stakeholder input, making sure that trustees, staff, students, parents, and community all have an opportunity to have a voice in that process. We want to make sure that we have wide-reaching promotion of the ways that stakeholders can have a voice in that process. There was a suggestion to do community forums, much like we do with the budget process, and we wanted to talk about a plan for how we can engage the school sites in that process as well. Again, the, the ultimate goal and all of those ideas really kept bubbling up in a, in a broader theme of making sure that people have a voice and making sure that people feel heard in this process. In terms of the scope of the search, national versus local, there were kind of mixed perspectives in this area, so I think that's one thing that we, that we should continue to discuss this evening. Screening, interview, and selection, there was conversation around the potential of a search committee to participate in that process. And then we did talk about some of the things that we need to consider. Of course, open meeting law applies to a committee of the Board of Trustees. And so where that search committee is involved in the process and what their role is, we need to be conscientious of that as we contemplate that decision. We talked about community meet and greet opportunities at various points in the process. We talked about how we might utilize a candidate scoring tool, but of course, there was concern about ensuring that it was not too rigid in terms of trying to assign a numeric value to candidates. And so perhaps that would most appropriately be used in the initial screening. I think it was trustee Cordell that suggested, like, maybe that's the tool that we use to screen out those who are just not qualified, and then other processes happen throughout to determine ultimately who makes it to you all for interview as finalists. We talked about making sure that interview questions reflect the needs of the district and the community, and I think a lot of that needs analysis will happen during the creation of the superintendent profile as we gather stakeholder input. It seemed that the board was inclined to rely on the experts to develop interview questions, again, so that we avoid any compromising open meeting law issues, right? If it's, if you all decide them, then they're public, and a smart candidate's going to go looking for them. And then when it came to search options and the right approach for supporting the search, we talked a little bit about a national firm, a local firm or consultant, where the search committee would fit in, and then the potential for using district staff to support that search. And again, there was mixed perspectives in that area. And so I think scope and search options are where we should spend some time discussing. But also, having reviewed those highlights, is there, is there any other thoughts that you've had since then, or trustee Raymond, or, or Dr. Ta, trustee Dr. Taylor, if you have anything to add to the themes that kind of came out of the last conversation? I think we can go from there.
Well, I had the time to watch the meeting from the twenty, or the whatever, today's, no, I don't know what day, sorry. The twenty-seventh, twenty-third. And I just, especially around the involvement of the community, I echo every sentiment. I was thinking along the same lines of the budget forums idea, too. And I think, as was stated in the meeting then, but I just really hope that, that outreach includes all, as many parts of our community as possible. I definitely want to hear from, you know, those stakeholders, but I think we just need to continue to try to reach out to communities that don't often feel as included in the process, for whatever reason. So I just hope that we can find lots of opportunities, and a lot of the ideas I heard would, would do just that. So I, I would, I don't have anything else to add that wasn't said. I just really appreciated the conversation, and sorry I couldn't be part of it last time, but I don't want anyone to feel like they need to rehash any of that, so.
Okay, Dr. Taylor.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm, I'm going to concur with the lot, excuse me, of what Vice President Raymond said. I think they're, they're some of the most important things, and I'll have some thoughts on screening and so on when we get to that point. But I know tonight, we're really narrowing in more on, you know, the, the scope of the search and whether or not we're going to have some outside help. And I think that's appropriate, otherwise it's, we can be here all night talking whatever, and then, then it's going to be six months later, we're going to talk about it again. Because we'll learn more as we go along in the process. But, but I, I think, you know, we want to make sure and just have as, as inclusive of a process as we can. Certainly, a lot of our conversation was around what we do externally, which is really important, but also want to make sure all of our constituencies internally feel like they, they've had that opportunity for a voice as well. And, and I think the budget forums created a good opportunity, just because we had a lot of teachers and so on that came to those and such. But I don't know if there may be an even better way that's specific to them, just really want to hear from them. We had a lot that shared their thoughts earlier in this process and so on, so obviously something that's really important, you know, to them. So just have as much of an emphasis on getting those, hearing those internal voices as well as the external voices. But that's all, with that, again, I don't feel a need to rehash, I don't think that's fair to you guys, because I had to fly and had to skip, step out early. My comments around it would be that I do think, I do think that I want to have, obviously, we all want to hire the best possible person that we can. I mean, this is, this is the single most important thing that we do, in my opinion, is select a leader for this, for this organization, which is really for this community. And so personally, my personal preference is to cast as wide of a net as we can. I, I've had some balance I've had, I mean, I've had as many people say, let's have a local search, as, as many people say, man, you got to have a national search. I mean, so, so I, it's kind of, I can't look at, because it's kind of been balanced for me. And so a, a place for me in my mind in, in preparing for the meeting was if we have a national search that doesn't exclude local candidates, especially with, if we make sure that, however it is we go about this search, that there is a concerted effort to encourage local candidates to be involved. Whereas if we have a local search, we exclude other candidates. And if we have a local search only, and we don't find someone that we all think is our best person, then we're limited, we have to start over or something. So I, I would like for us to be able to find a way to, to again, cast a white net, you know, but make sure there's a big emphasis on local candidates, because then we don't exclude anybody that could be our best candidate and, and so on. So that's, I take on that, Madam President. And is, is it time for a motion on that, or do? No, I didn't, no, I know what you're asking.
Yeah, I want to open up and see what other, what other thoughts people have if, if folks want to weigh in. Trustee Kelly.
Thank you, Madam President. And I think you're the one that has suggested this, and the more I thought about it, the more I like it. Having, you know, a, a national firm with expertise in reaching out to with expertise in reaching out to, you know, superintendents of smaller school districts and deputy superintendents at bigger districts and just, that has that expertise to go national to handle that part of the search, and then having a local firm that knows our community and knows what we're about and knows how to organize, you know, the town halls and how to do the surveys and how to get stakeholder input from a broad spectrum, I thought that was an approach that seemed really, really good. And I've had a chance to, you know, mull it over for a few weeks, and I've run it by just a number of people that I've met, just out and about or through phone calls and emails and stuff, and the feedback I've gotten from most people of that approach has been really positive. So that's kind of where I'm leaning about that.
Okay, great. Thanks for that input. Vice President Raymond?
Well, I'll touch on scope of search. I think personally for me, I feel very strongly that the pool of candidates that we look at includes candidates from across the, be a national search, and hopefully include a lot of local or at least, you know, Nevada-based candidates if at all possible. I think, you know, sort of going back to what the interim superintendent stated, I think it's what's right for the district to be able to show the community that the individual that is ultimately in the position was, you know, considered against the best in the country, you know? I think that would be important whether they end up being internal or not, so that is my feeling about the scope. And I think whether it's annual or local, I'd actually like to be able to consider both options. I think I could see there being local firms that might have the ability to reach out nationally that understand what we need at a local level, but still have that, you know, connection at a national level, and it would just be interesting to kind of be able to compare. I actually had the opportunity to talk with the executive director of the State Association, and many school board associations across the country help with superintendent searches. Our state association hasn't done that, but they have expressed an interest to me in sort of, you know, seeing what, where they might be able to help us, and so I think, you know, that kind of could fit into what Scott was saying. I mean, I just think we owe it to the community, too, to consider both national and local firms, in my opinion, and it will give us a sense fiscally how much of an impact one versus the other might have on the search.
Okay. Others? Ms. Minneto?
I agree with that. I think that we need to have a balance, if we can, because we need to spread, you know, find out our best person, but it could be in our backyard and, you know, we don't necessarily know that. So, yeah.
Yep, yep. Ms. Calvert? Oh, our student?
Yes, Victoria, and you get a meritorious award for being here for five hours on a school night, second day of school.
You said about, you were talking about including people to hear their voice about what they think about the superintendent. I think that's like really important because like it shouldn't just be like the trustees and everything and the adults that are in our community, because if you guys go like nationwide, students in the district should also get to meet them to see how she or he acts around, or like gets along with students, because like for student voice, like conferences, superintendent like goes, they're the ones that like run it kind of, so like it's like to see how much they can like express their like energy and like positivity towards the students. So it would make a big, it makes a big impact on the district for the students, depending how they are with the students, so it should matter.
Yeah, that's a great idea. Thank you.
That's, thank you, Victoria. And I'll weigh in. I like Trustee Taylor's language about casting a wide net. I think we, as has been said, this is the most important thing that we do. I think it's anybody who is going to take this job wants to know that themselves that they were the best candidate, that they were the one that rose to the top, and I think that's really important for the candidate. It's important for the employees to know that that was the best person. It's certainly important for our students, and it's important for our community to know that we found the absolute best person. So I'm in favor of a very inclusive, casting a wide net for the scope of the search and that we, that it be open so that it's, we do encourage local and statewide people, and we also, we show folks that we deserve to have the absolute best, and whoever is out there that is the absolute best fit for our organization is who we should be looking for. So that's where I stand on the, on the scope. We did have some conversation last time about the challenges of having our poor HR department be able to do this, and there's, you know, I just want to reiterate that that is not ideal for a couple of reasons. One, just bandwidth, asking our HR staff when we, I understood today we're still down about 50 teachers for this school year as opposed to 750 at Clark County, but we won't mention that. But, you know, you all are busy doing the work of the district's HR functions, and I think it's a tremendous responsibility and a burden for you to have the, you know, the bandwidth and the capacity to do this. It's also, it's also complicated because you would be hiring your boss, and that creates just a whole lot of challenges. We want to, we, I know we all believe so much in transparency, in objectivity, in demonstrating best practices, and I think there would be suspicion on the part of some folks in the community if our own HR department were running the process. So I'm very much in favor of having a search consultant firm. And just like casting a wide net for the best superintendent candidates, I think we post a proposal that's carefully written that would suggest that if a national firm wants to do one part of the process and collaborate with a local firm to do the public outreach, you know, that's something that we can encourage in a proposal. So I'm in favor of a consultant, casting a wide net for consulting support and casting a wide net for the scope of the search.
Trustee Caudill?
So how long do you think it would take to get the bid ready, get it out, and then have essentially proposals to bring to us or to let us see the bids?
I'm glad you asked.
I'm looking at the calendar, I'm just trying to, so the calendar would imply that would be through November?
So if we seek proposals from national and local firms, there's really two ways we can do that. So as, because it's a professional service, we don't have to go through the formal purchasing RFP process. We can, which is going to be kind of my second decision point when we get there for you, but that will add a significant amount of time to the process because you have to formulate a committee. Obviously, there's a lot of steps, as you saw, from the insurance RFP process, right? There's a lot of steps that go into that. Our purchasing staff is also extremely busy when it comes to just the normal business of the district. So when I talked to Andrea about what that timeline would look like, she wanted me to include a minimum of four months from start to finish, so announcing the RFP process and then going through all of the steps to then bringing you all the award for contract. So my recommendation would be that we go the route of the, what we do to procure other professional services, so we would contact potential vendors, provide them information on what they should include in their proposal, and I think we could, and I gave a draft proposal in these documents, too, or draft proposal request in these documents, and so we provide them the information that we're looking for and then have them come do presentations. We could screen for minimum qualms, right? Did they meet all the request stipulations, but, and then invite folks to do proposals. So RFP or non-RFP will change the answer to your question. In the non-RFP model, which is the top chart up here, I think it would be reasonable to say, this is still a very aggressive timeline, but we got a lot of things to do before, it's hard to think about planning for 2020 when we're on day two, but we got a lot of things to do before then, and so I would be targeting to have those proposals back and be sharing those with you in the second September meeting. In the RFP model, you're seeing proposals in probably early December.
Just one note, Emily, I will not be here on September 24th, so.
Okay.
That would not be an ideal meeting for me. Yeah, I apologize for that.
That's okay.
Yeah, and so when you say no formal RFP, do you describe that, describe it as like an invitation to bid? We could use the resources of the National School Boards Association, we could use other folks to identify who we might send it to?
Yeah, exactly. So we would, I would of course look to you all for recommendations.
We've already heard from several.
We've heard from many vendors. You all are very connected, right? We can use the school board association. We also are connected to the school, I can't remember the acronym, but it's like the School Personnel Administrators Association, right? So we would, we would look to sources like that to send this out to, and then they would send their proposals to me, depending on the number of proposals that we got and the viability of those proposals, then we would identify who is most appropriate to come to present to you all. And I think, I don't remember who said it earlier, but I think if we request sort of all of the elements of the search and how they would address that, but leave some flexibility for them to either partner with a local organization or with maybe another vendor that they utilize for certain components, and then we could also include in that that vendors could be awarded all of the business, or they might be awarded pieces of the process, so.
Okay. Yeah, that sounds great.
I think one thing that I did want to point out, just kind of based on the last conversation, was I built these timelines around the notion that once the recruiting and screening began, there's sort of the applicants that you collect, right, and likely the vendor would screen those applicants for minimum qualifications, and then perhaps that's when we would utilize the search committee to conduct sort of an initial vetting of those applications. A lot of these variables are going to be determined kind of by the proposals that we get and what the firms are capable of, but I had to build some kind of a timeline, right, and I want to make sure that the things that you guys talked about last time were accounted for there. So again, my thought was initial screening, do you meet minimum qualifications, should you even be considered as a candidate, search committee that then ultimately identifies who the finalists are that make it to you all, so.
Okay. Yes, Vice President Raymond?
Well, I would just comment that I think maybe to me that one of the biggest pluses of the no formal RFP process timeline is it just, it gives us more time to have that community input. You know, we don't get to a point where we're then only really left with two or three months to gather all the information and rush through that process. I'd rather have more time with that, you know, creation of the ideal candidate feedback and then lots of time then for the community to be involved on the other end, you know, I think that's the plus of our timeframe, starting it, you know, now, is that we can really take our time, involve the community in every way, and make the decision without feeling a rush to get something done, so.
Good. Okay, Dr. Taylor?
Thank you, Madam President. I also think that the advantage of a, of a no formal RFP process is that it feels more transparent to me, maybe because things are starting earlier and so on, because people have already asked, hey, how you guys doing on this site? And we actually could talk about, here's some progression, here's some things that are happening, and people can see more of it, and so I think that helps people feel like there's a little more transparency in the process as well.
Trustee Caudill?
So for the no, the no formal RFP process versus formal, what would be the estimated cost difference, do you think?
I don't, I don't think there would necessarily be one, because the proposals are going to drive the cost, right? It's harder to put a number on, but there's certainly a cost for staff time to support the RFP process, but that would really be the only cost difference between the two models that I can think of.
Yeah, I, I hear you. My concern is that the no formal is we're reaching out, and the formal is we get bids, and I want to make sure we do this right, but I also don't want us to, we're going to lose a lot of credibility, we're going to lose a lot of credibility if we're paying a substantial amount of money for a search firm.
We would still be bidding it. We're still going to bid it. We're just, it's a different way of soliciting the bids. This way, we would get a list of consultants that have been used by other trusted sources, and we would send a request to bid to those folks, rather than posting it on biduniverse.com or whatever, whatever we use.
That's the website.
So they would, they would still be bidding, they would still be competing against each other for our evaluation. We don't have to go with the lowest bid because it is a professional services contract, but we certainly are, all of us care about it being a, you know, not exposing the district to a huge cost. So just want to clarify, it would be bid still.
Yeah, and I think Trustee Taylor's point is well-taken. In an RFP process, all of the review of proposals and decisions about who to award the contract to are going to be made by the RFP committee and then submitted to you as a recommendation versus, and so they're made by the RFP committee, right? And then in this process, you all would receive the proposals and the bids and then make a decision versus.
So it's more transparent.
Yes, versus making a decision on the award of one or two contracts, right, based on the recommendation of the RFP committee.
Can I ask?
Yeah, go ahead.
For clarification for myself, so that, I thought what you were saying sort of at the beginning was the no formal uses really the HR department to get the bids, but the formal uses purchasing department to get the bids?
Yes.
And that process is just more?
It's more heavily regulated.
Yeah. And so the no formal allows the HR team that's working on it more flexibility to make the timeline fit differently? Is that sort of what I was hearing?
It accelerates the timeline, definitely, but I think to the point about transparency, if you think back to the insurance RFP, all of the review process happens with the RFP committee, and then a recommendation to award is submitted to the board, and you all can ask a lot of questions about that, right? Like, how did you get to this recommendation? But you're not participating in any of that review or analysis to then make the recommendation and award the contract.
Thank you. That, that's a plus I hadn't understood, so I think that's another, for me, a positive about that no formal process, because it is then more transparent, like you said. A little tired brain here.
That's okay, we all are.
I think the point that you made about the timeline, too, is important, because if you look at where the RFP timeline puts us in terms of actually reaching out to do that stakeholder input, there's a lot going on during that time, right? And I think that was right when we were doing budget forums last year. I know we're trying to do that on a more accelerated timeline this year, but I just, I worry about having so many things overlapping.
And Emily, I'm assuming you would still be collaborating with purchasing to help you develop the language of an RFP or a request for bid?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, definitely.
Okay, we have some public comment.
Todd Bailey?
Mr. Bailey, welcome back.
Thank you, Madam President. As you know, at the last meeting, we handed out the internal candidates first compromise, which I brought you another copy for everybody and also one for HR. And if there's any questions about this, you can of course contact me. In the plan, which we are talking about publicly, it does satisfy all the needs, I just heard at this board, the need for a national search committee, a local search committee, the timelines, internal candidates first. If that fails, you can go out for a national. If that fails, you can go out for a national search before you spend between $35,000 and $50,000. By the way, thanks, Mr. Roberto, to your team for providing the information on the cost of previous superintendent searches. I must say, I'm starting to have my doubts and confidence about the process already. We developed an RFP process and that was passed by the legislature for transparency. But I think what I heard everyone just say it is no, a non-RFP process is actually more transparent. I have my doubts about that. I also, when you talk about a non-RFP process and we're going to go out to trusted sources and find trusted people to help us in the superintendent selection process. In the past, what that has meant is a preferred candidate process where you might have seven people in the room, but there's really only one person that stands out as the obvious candidate, thanks to the firm that was hired to select those people. And we've seen now two or three times that that really hasn't worked so good. And so I have my doubts about that process. I also don't exactly understand why if the personnel department doesn't have time to handle the superintendent collection of the applications and turning that over to the board, but they do have time to do a non-official RFP process. You know, either we have time to do these things or we don't. Either we need more staff to do these things or we don't. But I have to tell you, the community is expecting you to get this right. If you're going to do a non-formal RFP process, then I think the public should be allowed to know all the different firms that apply to that process. I think if you're going to have a national firm do the recruiting process for the superintendent, we have the right to know all of the people who applied for the position. Because often we get to the end, it's like, well, none of the other candidates, you know, were qualified for the position and we're not going to release their names because, well, that violates their privacy. That's not an open process that is required under Nevada law and I feel like the entire process should be open and transparent. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. I think one of the things we haven't talked about yet tonight, that we did talk about last time, and I don't want to open it up for, you know, having motions and all of that tonight on this issue, but it's the notion of a search committee. And I think we did have a lot of conversation about our interest in having a very inclusive search committee that would include folks from the community, you know, potentially from, certainly from our employee groups, students. So we would, we would want to have parents, we would want potentially a person from, you know, UNR, a person from TMCC, a person from NDE, et cetera. And we would certainly look to a community-based search committee to do much of that work of review. It's not a search firm that's going to say, here, Board of Trustees is your top 10 candidates and you figure out the, you know, three finalists. I think, I think there was considerable agreement that we would want to have a community-based group of stakeholders that would help do that. So that's for another discussion for another time. But I did want to comment, just to clarify, it's certainly not my intent in having a search firm, a consulting firm assist us, that they're going to direct all of this. They work for us and we make the decision about a search committee, et cetera, that would review this, so. Is there another public comment? Okay. Okay, well, are we ready for a motion? Dr. Taylor looks like she's ready for a motion.
I am, if there is, it doesn't look like there are more comments, so. Should this be, it's all under one agenda item?
You can make, you can make multiple motions if.
Well, let me try it together. Because we may, we may be, let me try it together.
It is 9:15. No, this is important, this is important.
No, it is, it's absolutely important. I will stay over and fly in the morning.
Actually, if I can, I just want to create a record that you guys are proceeding under NRS 332-115, which says competitive bidding is not required. And that's important because you use the word bid and a lawyer might come back and say.
Okay, thank you.
Got you.
Proposals, is proposals the right?
Proposals.
So they would be competitive proposals.
Competitive proposals, I like that.
Okay.
So Madam President, I move that the, the board, that the board accept, open up a process to accept competitive proposals for any firm that may be interested in helping to direct a national search.
Or support.
Support, that's right. We don't want to, support a national search while making sure it's inclusive of an emphasis on local candidates that may be interested.
Yeah, a local.
And, and the, and the competitive, the competitive proposals be open so it could include collaboration with the local firm, with the national firm or individual efforts, whichever way they choose to, to propose.
Did you get all that, JJ?
Okay, let me try two motions. Madam President, I move, I move that, I move that we have a national search for the position of superintendent and, and that in the national search, any local candidate be encouraged to apply.
Okay, is there a second? Second by trustee Calvert. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, thank you.
Okay, I'll try part two.
Part two.
Madam President, I move that we, that the board accept competitive proposals from, from firms interested in assisting with the search. And that proposal may include collaborating with, with other firms or assisting with the entire process themselves.
Okay. Does that qualify? Is that good? Okay. All right, is there a second? Second by Vice President Raymond, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Well, this is very exciting.
Can I ask one more question?
Sorry, do we need to make a motion about the timeline?
Maybe. So my question is, in terms of the requests that we put out for competitive proposals, are you comfortable with me working with purchasing on that language and then initiating the process?
To what?
To the president, maybe, that you put your eyes on?
What are the thoughts folks have? I'm certainly not an HR expert, but it's an important proposal. Maybe the board officers can, is that possible that the board officers can review it or no?
Well.
Then that becomes a committee of the board, yeah, okay. Okay. So either, yeah, either we'll just delegate to the staff or we can bring it back to the president. What's your pleasure, board members, colleagues? Trustee Kelly?
I would think whatever's the most transparent. So I would, I would favor maybe bringing it back to the board, having all of us look at it.
Okay. That'll, that'll add some time to the timeline, but that's good. I think that, I'm comfortable with that.
Any thoughts on the draft?
Yeah. I'm comfortable with it coming back to the board, so.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, let's put that into motion. Trustee Kelly, do you want to put that into motion?
So moved?
JJ, the motion was to bring back the, the solicitation for competitive proposals to the board for approval before it's issued. Is that right? Yep, okay.
That's.
And second by Dr. Taylor. Okay. Anything further on that? We did have a public comment card, is that for this item? Okay, let's go ahead and have that public comment. Thank you for staying so late as well.
Thank you. Tammy Berg, for the record, community member, previous parent, my children are out of the district now. The only concern that I saw was on the gather stakeholder input, which is basically the months of October and November. And my mind kind of began to whirl of what parents do during all of those times as we lead up to Christmas, let alone we have a fall break, you have Nevada Day. All those dates that we as parents took off, maybe left town, didn't necessarily want to participate in stakeholder meetings. So my mind went to, I sure hope that if that's the timeline that's going to stick, that maybe there needs to be some front-loading of when, I mean, literally picking dates and getting information out to the parents, to the parent groups and et cetera as to when those dates are now and that they're not, you know, the Thursdays before those three-day weekends and not the Monday after those. So just kind of my thinking out loud and I thought, I better.
Good, good comments, good reminders, thank you, thank you for that. We'll certainly make sure that our, our folks that are doing the community engagement process are cognizant of some of those important dates. And this is, this is a fluid, this is just a draft, you know, this is, we are not adopting this timeline. So I just want to make that clear.
So to answer trustee Raymond's question, I don't think we should take action. I think there are a couple of modifications we need to make just based on these decisions and the conversation. And then I think that the proposals will, will drive a lot of this timeline, right? The proposals that we receive will indicate what the vendors are capable of in this timeline and also, you know, from a stakeholder input perspective to, to the public comment concern, what that stakeholder input process looks like will have a significant influence on when that occurs, right? And, and I do think we have to be absolutely sensitive to breaks and making sure that people have other ways to voice their feedback as well, aside from just attending events.
Great, okay. Did we vote on everything we needed to vote on? Yeah, we didn't, yeah, I didn't think so.
Can I just add?
Yeah, okay.
Can I add one comment to that? I think too, just along the lines of the timing and I would just add that I think if we have to have special meetings as a board about any of this, I think, then we need to do that. So I wouldn't limit just to board meetings. If it feels like we need to add in a special meeting at some point or, you know, take half a day that, you know, do half for budget and half for this, then we do it, so.
Okay.
That's great, good, good.
That's awesome, thank you.
Yeah, good points. Okay, all those in favor of Mr. Kelly's motion? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Yes, we do, yes, we do. That motion was that the proposals that they, okay, would come back to the board for approval before it being issued. Okay, is there anything else on that item? You got to go.
If this item is done.
It is done. I believe we're done.
Done, thank you.
And I, I thank my colleagues because this is a very, very momentous decision that we have made and I, I applaud everybody's attention for this. Thank you, trustee Dr. Taylor, have a safe trip. Okay. I know, I know. Thank you, Emily, and I know that you all will be doing a lot of work, even if you're not the main support for this. So we appreciate that. And we certainly will want to get the word out to folks that may be interested in submitting a proposal that, to let us know that they are interested and we'll get all of those communications to Emily. Okay, exciting. We will now move on to items under, under number four. And if anyone wants to, I don't know who's letting Kristin back. Thank you, Vanji, appreciate that. Why don't we go on to board reports? If anybody has any board reports they would like to make? Trustee Kelly?
I just wanted to thank the members of the media that are here for sticking with us to the end.
Yes, we do thank you for that. It's an important, important decision. There she is. Board reports, does anyone want to share any board reports? I know we were all busy yesterday doing visits to schools and seeing how things were going and talking with staff and students. It was a great day. Anybody, no, no bites on, okay, board report, all to you, interim soup.
Oh, my goodness gracious. All right, I know you guys really want to go, so this is going to be super quick. But, and don't, okay. I've got to say, it was a fantastic first day. It was an awesome first day.
It was.
You know, just some notes, just so, we're very transparent. So Dotson Elementary is a school that is on a Capitol Projects schedule and so they will start school on August 26th. They will not have a fall break and they will be one late, one week less during spring break. We had 58 teacher vacancies, which was a little bit higher than we had last year, but it was because of our literacy specialist positions that we had posted. And so those, the literacy specialists are now classrooms that were going to be filled by a classroom teacher. So we will get those posted as quickly as we can. I want to send a shout out to Roy Anderson, our emergency manager and the Nevada Department of Transportation. They really came through along with our school police for the very first time ever in the history of our district. We have had on our highway signs, "School Zones Are Open." And that seems like a little thing, but it was huge to get that done. Shout out to communications and, and everybody that helped with our expo this Saturday. It was packed, it was amazing. We had a lot of parents out there, students registering. It was really, really great. And just so you know, the pathway to positive progress, our 60/90 day plan is available on the website. I'm not going to take time to walk through it because trustee Kelly will throw a baseball at me. But there it is, it is public. And we also, I believe, have a link, I'm looking at communications, for the survey. The survey for input?
Yes.
There it is.
There it is. Awesome, see, there we are, all right. That's okay. So there is the survey and so the public can now weigh in. Obviously, our employees have been able to weigh in on the plan, but I know I'm, I'm very excited about the plan going forward and looking forward to the input.
Excellent. Okay, well, thank you, and thank you, Kristin, and thank you all of the employees and the leadership team members who have been participating in this. And I know Kristin welcomes the support and advice from the board members on what we're hearing and what ought to be added. We appreciated the work session last week. So thank you to everybody and we'll keep moving forward in a positive direction with the great momentum that we've established so far. Okay, do we have any future agenda item requests? Can I make an agenda item request for a policy committee meeting at this? Or do I need to wait till September? Counsel? Okay, I'll just tell you. Any, anyone else feature agenda item requests? Okay. Do we have closing public comment? We do not. Our next meeting announcement then is Tuesday, August 27th at 4:00 PM here in the boardroom. And with that, we are adjourned.